6:30, let's have a call to order. Go call please, Troy.
Nancy Cupka?
Present.
Mike Davenport.
Here.
Sherrell Fuller.
Here.
Dan Nicholas.
Here.
Terry Pavasich.
Here.
Rick Pavanato.
Here.
Joanna Boskos-Drexler.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a quorum with Stanford, the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Prior to the first reception of visitors, Dr. Thiele, you have some comments you want to make?
Yes, I have a statement I'd like to read. It was sent out to the community earlier this evening, or earlier today, but I don't want to assume that everybody has had the opportunity to read it. So here it goes. Before we open the floor to the reception of visitors, I'd like to share some of my thoughts. The last few months have been incredibly trying on everyone. We are all stressed, scared, and concerned for our kids. None of us signed up for the world that we are living in right now. However, the Board of Education and administrators did sign up to do what we believe is best for District 99 and our students under any circumstances. We have always done that and will continue to do so. Our community has rightly been concerned and anxious for answers. Unfortunately, in the last two weeks, the uncertainty has created division. As of late, many people, in their attempt to persuade others that they are right, have forgotten that we are all going through this together as a community. In the last few weeks, board members and administrators have been threatened, have been told that people are hoping that we die of COVID, and have had other individuals wish that our own children catch this horrible disease and die first. I've seen equally horrible comments on social media directed at members of this community and our teachers. I respectfully ask that this all stops tonight. We are all here through no fault of our own. A novel virus combined with the lack of timely leadership at all levels above us brings us to where we are tonight. We left our school buildings on March 13th but had no clear guidance for this year until June 23rd. And that guidance was full of statements couched with if possibles and unclear recommendations. We have continued to receive changing guidance throughout the summer, including 100 new pages from the state just last week, less than a month before school starts. And even with all of these challenges, we have continued to work closely with our health department and have developed a safe plan that is focused on the needs of our students. I have attempted to keep the community informed and have shared what we were able to via email all summer. However, too often, people look for some underlying hidden meaning in what we send out. I do not operate that way. What I send to the community is sent with positive intent. I'm trying to lead us forward in the way that I believe is best for our students. When I shared with the community on Friday that we needed to change our path forward because of documented medical accommodation and leave requests, it was exactly that. It was not some hidden message about a teacher's strike or some veiled threat towards our staff. We proactively reached out to our staff before our hybrid plan was released to gather requests for legitimate medical concerns and leave requests. Those were due on Friday only two weeks after the plan was released to the public. This is not a lot of time to gather everything you might need to document such a request. And as of Friday, we had received requests from 57 teachers and support staff seeking what they believe are legitimate, documented, medical accommodations or leave requests. This reflects approximately 9% of our staff that interact with students on a daily basis. We need to process all of these with the care and respect that they deserve. If we need to provide accommodations, such as working remotely or grant a leave request, then we have to hire or reassign staff to take care of that work. Hiring in a school during a pandemic and a teacher shortage is difficult. Doing so requires us to recruit, interview, background check, hire and onboard new staff. This all takes time. Results from a background check can take a few days to a few weeks. This is why we have recommended the new modified hybrid plan. Tonight, we are still requesting to open with a modified hybrid model for one week to start the school year. By supplementing with internal substitutes and administrators, we are able to cover for staff shortages and run the schedule for one week. However, it is unsustainable in the longer term until we resolve our staffing needs. This one hybrid week allows students to come in and meet most, if not all, of their teachers and get the materials that they need for the year. It also allows us to execute the hybrid model for one week and learn from it. From there, we recommend transitioning to two weeks of remote learning, which you'll hear specific details about tonight and how it will differ from the spring. During the remote learning time, we will plan for return to the hybrid model if conditions allow us to be in a hybrid model while following IDPH guidelines. It will be my recommendation tonight to have students return to school on September 8th under the hybrid model if it is safe to do so at that time. This plan provides us the time we need to get our staff in place to run this model for as long as possible. You will hear tonight specifically how we arrived at this point, some information about the hybrid model and details about remote learning. You will hear from the public soon in the reception of visitors. And I remind those in attendance that we will not respond to questions during this time. This is your opportunity to have your voice heard. It is not a dialogue. However, I will attempt to answer questions we hear as part of the presentation that will follow. We will also track questions to include in an updated FAQ released soon. For those who choose to learn remotely entirely in our hybrid plan, we will support you. We will ensure equity for all students and everyone will receive a quality education and a positive experience, no matter where they're learning. Students will have access to teacher office hours. All materials will be available, whether conveyed remotely or in person. Remote resource centers will be open and attendance will be taken. You will be served by our curriculum. You will be served by our teachers. Finally, I would like to thank the students, families, and community members that have participated in this process. No school administration staff of Board of Education has ever been through this before, just as nobody in the public has. I ask that everyone take a moment to understand that we are all doing the best we can in a terrible situation. Nobody knows the absolute right answers right now and we're all trying to do what we think is best for our students. I ask, as we enter into the reception of visitors, that everyone remain civil. Please know that the administration and the volunteers that serve as board members up here tonight are all trying to find the best possible path forward when there is no clear answer. For my first time as a leader, I am confident that I will choose an outcome that will make nobody happy, not even myself. There is really nothing to be happy about in this time of COVID. And that's probably the only thing we can all agree upon right now. So thank you to the Board of Education for your service to this community and for your confidence in me as I lead this district. With that, I'd like to invite representatives from the DGEA up to address the board. Yes, you are in the right place. Thank you.
All right, good evening. I'm Valerie Hardy, President of the Downers Grove Education Association, also known as the DGEA. And with me tonight is Jake Giblin, who's our Vice President from Downers Grove South. And the rest of our board is watching remotely because we're on limited space. DGEA represents the nearly 420 licensed educators within District 99. Before I share anything further with you all tonight, on behalf of our Executive Board and our general membership, we need to say thank you to our District 99 Board of Education and to our administration for the tireless work that you have done this summer trying to get your arms around the ever-changing educational and safety guidance being issued, to monitor the status of COVID-19 within our community, to identify various reopening options for the 2020-21 school year, and to draft plans and protocols for proceeding forward. We know you have taken invaluable time away from your own families in order to support the best needs of our students and their families. Like many of our association members, I'm also a proud resident of Downers Grove and the District 99 community and I'm also a proud parent of an incoming North High 9th grader. As both a teacher and a parent, I want absolutely nothing more than to have students and teachers back together for in-person instruction in a way that, as DGEA spoke to a couple meetings back, is safe, effective, efficient, equitable, and trauma-informed. And I know that our staff at large desperately wants the same thing. For some students and teachers, however, being back together in person is just not a viable option. In many ways, schools are a microcosm of society. And just like our current society, there are individuals in District 99 who unfortunately are unable to return to business as usual due to personal medical risk factors and/or caretaker responsibilities. Like employees in various industries throughout our nation, District 99's qualifying staff members are entitled to accommodations under the Americans with Disabilities Act and our leaves of absence under the Family and Medical Leave Act and its recent extension, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. DGEA fully, fully supports its members in their request for such accommodations or leaves as is their right. There is no shame in a teacher needing to approach this year under precautions, just as there's no shame in a teacher advocating to get back into the classroom as soon as possible. There's no shame in a student or their family vehemently wanting to return to learning at school, just as there's no shame in a student or their family choosing a fully remote learning option if that's in their best interests. As we continue to move through the public health crisis that we're living within, there is no easy solution or one right way forward. Should the Board decide schools should open under the hybrid model for some in-person learning? We don't think the worst-case scenario will transpire, but we don't know that it won't. Unfortunately, none of us has a crystal ball here to help guide the way. This situation is unprecedented, highly complex, and extremely emotional and stressful for all of our stakeholders. This is why we have seen our DGEA members, the Board of Education at times, and our greater community divided in response to the district's originally proposed and recently revised reopening plans. But despite these many differing perspectives, we are all here tonight, whether it be in person or watching virtually, because we care about students and we want to find a way to provide them with the rigorous, engaging, and enjoyable high school experience they so desperately deserve, whatever form or forms that may take this year. We are all making extraordinarily difficult decisions in real time and without any blueprint. And while an educational plan for this year will be imperfect based on the environmental context that is being enacted within, it is DGEA's sincere hope that we all will work together to maximize the outcomes for students. In times where communities have difficult decisions to make, it is best that all perspectives are viewed as honest, as genuine, and that we do not seek out scapegoats or resort to attacks. In Dr. Thiele's email to staff and community on Friday regarding the district's proposed new direction, Board President Nancy Cupka was quoted as having said, "The education of our students and the health and safety of our students, staff, and community are our top priorities." Throughout this process, DGEA has been and will continue to be acting under these same priorities, supporting students' academic, social, and emotional learning as well as their, our, and our community's safety needs under whichever model or models of instruction the Board ultimately enacts. Regardless of which model is chosen, little about the school year will look anything like what our students expect. We wish that we could offer them school as usual, but unfortunately, that's just not a possibility right now. But we will do our best to offer them the best version of whatever model or models the Board decides upon this evening or beyond. To try to reimagine teaching and learning under the current circumstances, 40 of our members have joined forces with administrators throughout the district across six committees focused on details of the hybrid instructional model as well as on a fully remote instructional model. And our goal in all of this work is to best support both students and staff in their transition, and it's going to be a hard transition, to this new school year. Likewise, DGEA and its members have been and continue to be at the ready to work collaboratively with administration to help prevent issues from arising and to problem any issues that do arise at various forks in the road, including the potential staffing needs stemming from the accommodations or leaves of absence our members must take should the Board approve those under the current reopening plan. For weeks, the Board has heard many, many perspectives around what District 99's start to the 2020-2021 school year should look like. Tonight, the Board has a critical decision to make. And DGEA and its members, like the greater District 99 community, have been anxiously awaiting this decision. While we all still have our work cut out for us, once the Board makes its decision regarding how students and staff will kick off the coming school year, District 99's educators will work tirelessly to learn if needed and to employ the best practices to ensure that our students are equipped with the necessary knowledge, skills, and experiences to persevere in the face of adversity, to be open-minded to the opinions of others, to use their voices to stand up for what they believe in, and to be safe, productive, 21st-century citizens in the midst of a global pandemic and beyond, because this too shall pass. And we know we won't be alone in these efforts. We have an outstanding community that knows how to unify in difficult times. We know this because we've experienced this. And now is no different. We would like to echo Dr. Thiele's earlier call to set aside the anger, the attacks, and to move forward to support our students' learning and well-being. Thank you.
All right. Due to social distancing, we've had to limit the end under Phase 4 Illinois guidance. We've only been allowed to have 50 people in the room tonight. People registered as they came in to speak. So I will call up people in the order in which they arrived and selected that they wanted to speak. The guidelines for the reception of visitors are up on the screen there. So there's two opportunities for the reception of visitors. The first one this evening is reserved for any comments regarding return to school or any other item in which we are taking action this evening. We typically have a 30-minute allocation for any one topic, but the Board has and the Board President have chosen to extend that to 60 minutes this evening. Each speaker has three minutes, up to three minutes, to present. At the end of the time that you, at the end of your three minutes, I will stop you from speaking. I will ask you to just cease at that point. It's not rude. It may seem rude, but it is just the protocol of how a public meeting works. So I'll just call in order of what's here. And up first is Nicole Proimos.
Hello. It has been a trying summer for us all and I want to thank Dr. Thiele, the DGEA, teachers and staff, administration and the Board, everyone involved. This is a clear sign that no matter what we believe, we care at the end of the day. And I'd like to address the parents and the Board. To the Board, even in the face of difficult decisions, you were selected because of your desire to do what is best for our school and community, even despite what the majority believes at times. Last week, four of you believed that science showed it was too dangerous to re-enter the building. This week, the numbers are worse. Please don't lose sight of what's safest and follow suit with some of our surrounding districts. To the parents, I'm so sorry that we are in a position that may have caused you to lose faith in educators. Please know that we care dearly. We aren't wishing to shirk responsibilities. We aren't even doing this out of convenience. At the end of the day, we're humans with families and my resistance is because I fear, despite what others might believe, for my safety. And much like your concerns for your children, I am concerned too, not just for myself, but for anyone who enters the building and all of their families as well. Last week, Dr. Thiele articulated that the spring was the result of state mandates. We couldn't grade. We couldn't hold students accountable. We couldn't require them to meet us face-to-face. Before now, you trusted us to educate your children. Let us show you that we are determined to rise to the occasion and remembering that we are all concerned community members at the end of the day and to show you that we can be safe and still provide a worthwhile education. Either way, we need to support one another. This past week, multiple schools opened and immediately shut due to the spread, a couple in Indiana where I live. Educators who practiced safety measures such as mask distancing and hygiene fell ill. A school in Arizona lost a teacher and a week later had 40 tests positive. And those were schools who tested were not even planning on telling people if someone has it. I ask that you please reject any hybrid plan as it doesn't mitigate the risks. And please vote for e-learning because I'm not paranoid and we're not in a bubble. The safest and healthiest option is for us to protect our community members until the numbers drop. We aren't asking for raises. We're not stating that we don't wish to teach or dismissing student needs. I'm willing to work day and night. I've been on both the hybrid and the e-learning task force. And I want to provide a strong and safe plan. And I'm disheartened by the narrative that teachers are selfish because I want to work and help my students. And I believe that e-learning is the best way to do so. Please vote that tonight. Thank you.
Next up is Kelly Tracy Wood.
Hi, hello. Thank you for listening to me today. I am one of probably the few parents in the room who also think we should remote learn. I agree with pretty much 100% of what Nicole said. I think the risk is too high. Both of my children are afraid to go back to school and both have anxiety, so this is great. But I do implore the Board to vote. Please let's remote learn until it is safer. Thank you.
Melissa Rausch.
Sorry, I gotta put my timer on. Thank you for the opportunity this evening and for your commitment to this work. I'm Melissa Rausch, a parent of an incoming freshman at DGN, a lifelong resident of Downers Grove, a DGS alum, and a high school English teacher in a neighboring district. I firmly believe District 99 is not prepared to start the school year and open its doors to students in eight business days. I'm here to urge you tonight to postpone the start of the school year and if not postpone, then begin the year with full e-learning. I am frustrated, I am scared, and I am unsure of what the district has in store for my child's emotional, physical, and academic well-being this coming fall. It's already been mentioned that the district will have had less than one month to review, prepare, and implement the newly-released ISBE recommendations, which is challenging in and of itself. There are six business days until faculty and staff report under this proposed plan. And I fully understand that things are fluid and changing. That was clear when the district notified the community of the staffing situation earlier, or last week. Dr. Thiele has already said the district has to provide accommodations for faculty and staff that have legitimate medical requests and that the district will need to recruit, interview, background check, hire, and onboard new staff. And to quote Dr. Thiele, "This all takes time." But under the administration's proposed opening, more time has not been provided. Rather, more tasks have been added to the district's ever-increasing list of things to do in the same amount of time. Trying to address staffing concerns by supplementing with internal substitutes and administrators in order to cover for staff shortages is a disservice to all constituents, puts the integrity of the programming and services provided by the district at risk. My question is what is there to gain from this? How will students gain under this proposal? No clear benefit has been presented. The only thing we have to lose by pushing the start of the school year is a few weeks from next summer's break. This is not a loss. This is not a sacrifice. This is an adjustment to how things are done in a pandemic. The students, teachers, staff, parents, guardians, future hires of the district administration, the administration itself, deserve to have this process completed in a timeline that allows for the appropriate dedication to all tasks at hand. If you push forward in bringing faculty and staff back in six days and students back in eight, no matter the format, hybrid, modified hybrid, remote, everyone loses. Please push the reopening date and give everyone time to do their jobs effectively. Thank you.
Chloe Shepherd.
Hello, I am Chloe Shepherd, I'm just reading what it says on the board.
Thank you, Chloe.
I'm in favor of hybrid learning. I will be honest, I know it's controversial. But I am personally in, I personally am for hybrid learning. I understand if we have to push back a few weeks to get more things under control. I understand that. A lot of the reason why I want to go hybrid learning is because of the struggles with remote learning. I have quotes from actual students from both North and South quotes from actual students from both North and South who could not make it here tonight addressing their concerns. A lot of their concerns have been not getting enough help from teachers online, teachers ignoring them, being overwhelmed. And people are so used to how school was before hybrid learning. And I think the reason why so many people want to go back to hybrid learning is we believe as students that we're going to get a better education. We fear that we're not going to get a good education if we go back to remote learning because of all the issues faced, whether technological, our own issues, and everything else. A lot of students have concerns that suffer from ADHD and other issues that struggle with online schooling, staying motivated, and getting the best education possible. My main focus of talking here is being a voice for students and getting the best possible education. I believe that's what's important as well as safety. That's why I also believe that if students don't feel safe coming back to school, then they have the right to stay home and do complete remote learning. If students want to come back in school and be taught and there's teachers willing to teach and do hybrid learning, then we should also do that. I feel like we need to do what's best for our students. And I've come to terms if we do hybrid or remote learning, but I also have a lot of concerns with remote learning. There was a lot of cheating. There was a lot of disorganization. There was no consistency, overlapping schedules. A lot of students were having mental breakdowns and found remote learning to be very overwhelming. There was little to no structure, and if there was structure, there wasn't a lot of teachers abiding by the structures that were followed. A lot of students are looking for help and needing, shoot, I just forgot, but a lot of students need tutoring and are asking questions, and teachers aren't able to help them. A lot of people are complaining about having no motivation to do anything and losing all motivation. And we need to be able to motivate our students. A lot of people are just really scared and worried about this school year. And a lot of students from both North and South, which I can pull up exactly what they're saying, are like looking forward to doing whatever is possible to make it as safe as possible to go back to hybrid learning. Over 52 students I've interviewed over the past three days have been willing to wear face masks and face shields for the safety of others and been willing to take any precautions to go back to school. A lot of students are just willing to go back and doing whatever possible, even if that's delaying the start by a few weeks. They're willing to do what is necessary for the best, for what's best for us and the best for our education. And a lot of students have a lot to say because they feel like we're not being heard.
Carolyn Plune.
Hello, my name is Caroline Plune, and I'm a senior at Downers Grove North. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I was a co-creator of the petition to support hybrid learning with my friends Owen Neistrom and Drew Swenson. We are students who have always been on the honor roll throughout our academic careers and who have taken many honors in AP classes. We're also heavily involved in the fine arts program. We value our education, and we're petrified at the idea of e-learning becoming the new normal. We wrote this petition because face-to-face interaction with teachers and peers is essential. This includes participation in extracurricular activities, including fine arts, sports, and clubs. Over 2,000 concerned students, family members, and community members indicated their agreement by signing our petition. I am someone whose mental health was extremely impacted by remote learning last spring. I am also someone who is not afraid to admit that I take medication for anxiety, and e-learning severely exacerbated my symptoms. It was difficult for me to get out of bed in the morning to complete an endless list of tasks by myself, sitting for hours in front of a computer screen. It felt like an overwhelming amount of work with very little feedback or reinforcement of any kind. I was stressed, lost, overwhelmed, and unmotivated. Of course, my teachers care for me, but I did not feel supported even when I was sending them emails daily. Students need to have a personal relationship with their teachers to create accountability. I know that allows me to show up for them when I'm unable to show up for myself. I also know that I'm not the only one who feels this way, and other students have spoken to me about similar experiences. I am extremely fortunate to have the resources of supportive parents and my therapists. I know that not everyone is as privileged as I am. Teachers are essential workers. We need them every day to show up in our lives, to not be only, to not only be educators, but also role models, trusted adults, and problem solvers. These are aspects of learning one cannot foster through a computer screen. Thank you.
Rich Benema.
Rich Benema, DGS alum and father of two DGS students. Since this is not the School Board for States bordering Illinois or even DuPage County, it is local District 99 data that should come first and foremost in any decision. If travel in and out of the district had any relevancy, it would already be reflected in the district's numbers. It is not. I am here to report the combined numbers for Downers Grove and Woodridge to provide a more complete view of District 99. In four and a half months of tracking, there have been 703 confirmed cases in District 99. That is 0.85% based on an estimated population of over 82,000. Of those, only 66 are students ages 10 to 19, which represents not only high school students, but roughly fourth grade through college freshmen. Under the age of 20, no one has been hospitalized in District 99, and no one has died anywhere in DuPage County, let alone District 99. Only one person aged 20 to 29 has died in DuPage County. In District 99, only 46 people between the ages of 20 and 59 have been hospitalized, which is 0.056% of the population. No one under the age of 50 has died. One person aged 50 to 59 has died. 13 of the 20 deaths were aged 80-plus. Hopefully, these numbers will alleviate some of the unjustified fear within our school community, but especially among you. Take confidence that by supporting the hybrid model, you are acting in good faith based on the best information available to you at the time. You are not exposing students, teachers, staff, or their families to a death sentence, far from it. Indeed, I believe these numbers would be strong enough to support full in-person if that were an option for us at the time. Our strong numbers tend to suggest that District 99 is mostly unaffected regarding the pandemic because its residents and those visiting Downers Grove and Woodridge are acting safely and responsibly, both in and out of town. How much more do we need to do to demonstrate our readiness? If these numbers are not low enough, how much lower do you pragmatically expect they could be? If now is not the time, then when? Board members, please approve the hybrid model. Teachers and staff, please return to school. FDR said, "The only thing we have to fear is fear itself," not because the problems were not real, but precisely because they were. Today, we face a different terror which is paralyzing needed efforts to convert retreat into advance. We need courage more than ever, not to be reckless, but to do what is right and necessary. We must be equal parts rational and responsible. Any precautions need to be grounded in education, not speculation. Thank you.
Bob Shepherd.
Thank you for letting us all come in here tonight under these challenging situations. Most everybody that's come before me has already stated most of the facts that I was going to say, so I'll be brief. I don't think you guys are ready to go back to school starting August 17th. I think you need to push it back to August 31st, or possibly Tuesday after Labor Day. I don't think that after what we experienced in the spring, the teachers have had enough time to prepare and be set up to handle any remote learning. Okay? You heard my daughter to speak. You heard another student speak. There was a lot of challenges that went on in the spring, and these kids were afraid to speak up and advocate for themselves and call the school, talk to teachers. They had to rely on their parents. They had to rely on us to try and get a hold of counselors and those at the school to try and help them out in their classes. So that's what I have to say. I think you guys need to push it back. Please consider starting on August 31st or the Tuesday after Labor Day. Thank you.
Owen Neistrom.
Hello, my name is Owen Neistrom. I'm a senior at Downers Grove North, along with my friends Caroline Plune, Drew Swenson. Last Monday, the three of us drafted a petition to support the hybrid learning plan of Community High School District 99 in response to an unfavorable preliminary vote by this board. The petition we drafted now has over 2,000 signatures demonstrating overwhelming public support for this learning plan. One of the reasons we were inspired to write this in the first place is our heavy involvement in the band program. We knew that if the district decided to go fully remote, the chances of us being able to participate traditionally in our music classes or extracurricular fine arts activities would be minimal. Extracurriculars, be it fine arts, clubs, or sports, give many students the motivation to perform better in school. The next reason we find it important to go back to school is because we care about the mental health of our fellow students. Beyond simply wanting to see our friends again, lack of social interaction is linked to increased risk for depression. Now that we have, now that we have transitioned back to being graded as normal, there is increased pressure on students. This stress can lead to anxiety, especially when it is much harder to advocate for yourself or for others to advocate for you. The remote learning plan simply does not address different learning styles, in addition to losing out on the valuable resource that is our peers. I think about all the times that I've learned something from whispering a question to a friend, from hearing the answer to one of my classmates' questions, or even from when my class goes off on a tangent. None of these occurrences that help foster learning are permitted by remote learning. Simply put, remote learning delivers a much lower quality of education. It isn't equitable either. Some students have their own personal workspace and parents or siblings that can help if they have questions, where others may be stuck in a crowded learning environment that makes it difficult to focus on classwork. Additionally, every college-bound senior would be put at a disadvantage by remote learning. We are facing gaps in our curriculum, less time with our counselors, minimal assistance with college essays, no access to the College and Career Center, all while competing with students who will not be handicapped by remote learning. Thank you for giving me the chance to present this petition.
Julia Fisher.
Hi, I am a senior, or an incoming senior at DGN, and I am here because unlike most of my friends, I wanted to do something and say something for what I believe in. And because it is, I just wanted to say that I am for the hybrid learning because I think it is important for teachers and students to get to know each other and learn in person. I'm also not afraid to admit that I am one of many students who struggles with anxiety and stress and having the energy to get, get up every morning and be ready for e-learning. I am someone who feels it is more important to be in school half the time and work with hybrid learning and have to wear and have to wear face masks and face shields. And even though it might be a struggle that, it might be a struggle that it's easier for me to learn because, because e-learning for me was hard. And, and while working with e-learning, it was hard for me to get a hold of teachers and emailing right away. And I think it's easier to understand assignments and finishing and dealing with the rest of my assignments. And I think that after, after finishing and dealing with the rest of my junior year, that it was very embarrassing and harder for me to learn. And that is why.
Deborah Walters.
Well, I'm not as eloquent as maybe some of the other people who prepared a long speech, but I'm going to speak mostly from my heart. I wanted to come tonight to represent the parents in this community who have really supported the educational opportunities that Downers Grove has been known to represent. You know, we clearly voted for this large multimillion-dollar support of the schools. I noticed that in the last week, people were putting up a GoFundMe already to say, "Let's throw money at these teachers. Whatever it takes, we want to support them." I mean, the message is that we in Downers Grove support education, and we support our teachers. But right now, I don't feel that the administration or the teachers are supporting my child. It was no question that what had happened in the spring. I understand that these teachers weren't prepared and everything, but they really abandoned my students. And that's what bothers me, is what is the school doing but abandoning my kids right now? I work in the healthcare field. My friends who are doctors and nurses are not abandoning your family members or anybody else at this time. They're pushing through the hard times, making the tough choices and showing up to work. I need these teachers, whether you go remote or you go hybrid, to have them show up to work and give the kids a full educational opportunity. And not only meet their educational needs, but their social and emotional needs. Just following these students, I'm in shock to hear that anybody wouldn't want to support high school students who say, "Please let me come back to school. Please let me come back to school." That is the thing. I mean, nobody wants to go and put themselves at risk in a pandemic, but you have to think of all these kids who are now sitting at home, isolated, in their room for months. And they want to go to school. My son, who doesn't love school, so this is the first year he wants to go back to school so badly because they're all so isolated. And if you close your doors and go fully remote, you're sending a message to kids that in the middle of a pandemic, you won't be able to come to school, have teachers and counselors and the support you need in a pandemic. And I think that's a really critical message that you're sending to students about their education, that teachers and the school are not going to support you through a pandemic. Stay home. We'll give you some minimal assignments. We'll only look at them remotely occasionally. We're not super available to you, and you're on your own. And I just hope you think about all those students who are alone, who are at risk of mental health crises. I'm a licensed clinical social worker, and I could tell you that we're all talking about the health, but let's think about these students who voiced their things, their concerns, and all these students who will be sitting there thinking that their school has even abandoned them in the moment of crisis. Think of their mental health as well when you're making this vote. Thank you.
Joe Raabig.
Evening. My name is Joe Raabig, R-A-B-I-G. I'm the parent of an incoming senior student here at Downers Grove South. And I came here tonight to vote my support for the hybrid plan and to show my support for the students. But actually, after hearing these students so eloquently and passionately express their own words, or their own, their concerns in their own voice, I don't think I can add anything on top of what they've already said. And I don't think the board can argue with the data that this young man had said as well. So I just want to say, I think the students belong in school. You have to consider the entire student. And I'm hoping that the board will vote the hybrid plan in because I think with our taxpayer money, supporting this school and supporting the teachers, we just feel, you need to support the entire student. Thank you.
Luke Reintgen.
Luke Reintgen, L-U-K-E-R-H-E-I-N-T-G-E-N. Sorry, it's spelled weird. I know it's probably like annoying as heck because like the world's on fire and you guys got to clean it up. Speaking off the cuff here, because I don't think a speech can really like summarize, like it's not the same as speaking from the heart. I want to tell you guys, I have autism, I have Oszbergers, which is a mild form of autism, and it was really hard last year, like really hard. Like I know you guys want to worry about safety and keeping kids like safe, and that's a good thing. Safety is a good thing. But I have to tell you guys a statistic. Only five people die of shark deaths every year. But a lot of people are afraid of sharks. Why? Because it's the mentality. A lot of people hear about sharks in the media and they're scared, right? Only 23 people under the age of 15 have actually died of COVID in the United States. That is not many people. And I want to say, I think people should go to school because it's good for their mental health. And it's really hard to be autistic and remote learn, like really hard. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke. Colleen Hallerhan.
Honorable board members, teachers and faculty, and parents and students watching tonight, first of all, I want to say thank you from my heart. I am in support of the hybrid option, but mostly because I'm support, in support of the effort and the heart and the thought and consideration that went into preparing the hybrid plan as presented. I do believe we should push back the start of the school year. I do believe our teachers deserve that amount of time to try and prepare and to create that effective plan. But tonight, I'm here to advocate for our students. I am a Downers South alum, and I'm the proud mother of a Downers Grove North alum and a Downers Grove North senior. And I'm just going to speak from the heart. I watched our teachers save lives. I was witness to my, one of my children noticing in class, one of her classmates was being abused. And she came home and said, "Mom, this person's being locked in the basement." And it was because of teachers at Downers Grove North who were there when she was beaten that saved her life. And if they hadn't been there for her, I do believe she would have died. And as I sat in the hospital with her, holding her hand, I knew she was going to be okay because I knew that these teachers were there for her. Today, she is a successful young woman, and she's doing very well, and I owe it. I know it comes from her experience at Downers North. So I ask you, and I beg you, please, for all of our students, for our students with special needs, for our fine arts students, for those kids who just need that teacher advocate for them, give them that opportunity to have just one day even in class with them a week. I'm begging you for all of our students, please, give all that students the option. And if a student does not feel safe, please allow them to work remotely. And for our teachers, they save lives. I'm begging you, please, give them what they need to do the job safely because we want our teachers to succeed, and we want them to be safe. We want all of our students in our community to be safe. So board members, thank you for all that you've done. It's a hard job, and your volunteers, and your help is appreciated. Thank you.
Dr. Kupka, that's the last of the folks that have signed up. However, we still have time in the reception of visitors.
Is there anyone else?
So this would be the opportunity for anybody who didn't sign up but still would like to address the board to do so. Please state and spell your name for the record.
Roland Johnson, R-O-L-A-N-D-J-O-H-N-S-O-N.
Thank you, sir.
I would have been planning to speak, but my daughter came, went to this high school, and my granddaughter's here now. And I've listened to a lot of people talk about the problems. I think we have to be really concerned is that, one, if we don't go hybrid, how are you going to take care of the students that need the lab work in the science department and other fields? And where you take care of the ones that need that extra effort by the teacher or the students that have resources to help them make it if they have struggling times? The, my granddaughter, who is a very good student here, Honor Roll, she thought this other program was no good, was not very good for them, improving their education to prepare for college. She's now, she missed her lab work last semester. And, and now she's going to have two lab courses, two math courses, all honors, and she feels they're not going to get the attention she needs by going non-hybrid. I understand the risk that we take by going hybrid. There is that risk, but you don't know what the risk is. As the man over here said, less than half a percent. Doctors are taking a risk every day and they're working. Nurses are taking a risk every day and are working. I go to work every day. I'm 78 years old. I'm still working full-time.
My name is Erin Reichert, E-R-I-N-R-E-I-C-H-E-R-T. Sorry, I just wrote this. My daughter is an incoming senior at Downers Grove South. My daughter received a 4.0 last semester.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Could you maybe move a little closer to the, thank you.
Sure. So my daughter is an incoming senior at Downers Grove South. My daughter received a 4.0 last semester, and she's a very good student, but she didn't deserve a 4.0. And when I asked her about her friends' grades, they too received a 4.0. So kudos to the teachers who thought that they taught our children and did so well that they received a 4.0. But when I asked my daughter and my friend, and her friends, "What did you learn in those two months where you were in your bedroom by yourself and miserable?", and they all said, "Nothing." And that scares me as a parent of a senior who is preparing for college and she is not getting the education that she deserves and all of our children deserve. And I know that there's been points about e-learning and that maybe there's master students who do really, really well, but they're also paying for that education, and they have a lot more on the line to get that education through e-learning. And they're also older and they're more accountable. These are our children, ages 14 to 18, and it just saddens me that when we listen to the CDC and we look at those amazing stats of the risk, why is it that so often we are focused on the negative and we're not focused on the positive? And the positive is that as a country and our county and our community, there is more than 99 point, probably 99% that survive COVID, but we are not rewarding the risk. The risk is, I think you said on, Michael, in the board meeting on July 20th, about risk and reward. And the reward is so much greater for our children. And I just want to leave you with this. My daughter did get COVID, and my husband and I never got it, our older daughter never got it, and we all live in the same home, and she quarantined and she had a miserable two weeks, never had a symptom, and she didn't die. She's fine and she's thriving and she's doing really, really well, but she wants to go back to school, and I really hope that you all will consider.
Floor is still open if anybody would like to address the board.
Hello. My name is Mary Beth Warner, last name spelled W-E-R-N-E-R, and I want to come up and first say that I appreciate all of your efforts, and I know it's been a difficult time. I also want to say that I am in an essential business and I have continued to work entirely through this COVID period, and it has required a lot of thought and a lot of creativity, which I felt that the hybrid model did pursue and did show. I think there's a way to get back to school and keep people safe, and I think you're going the right way with the hybrid approach. So I think that in the spirit of education and asking our children to be the best they can be, we have to be the best we can be. And that means we have to be creative and we have to figure out a way to get them back in school, because I don't think there's any dispute that that's the best thing for them and their education and their lives. So I just pray tonight that you will approve the hybrid method, even if it takes a little bit more time to get there, but I support it and I think that most of the community supports it. And people who don't support it, they have the option to work remotely and they can take that if that's what they're comfortable with. But I really implore you to work in your best effort and with vigor and excitement with the hybrid method. Thank you.
Anyone else? When I was a teacher, this is what they call wait time.
I was counting to seven.
All right, hearing none, we'll progress with the rest of the agenda.
Okay, let's move on to the board workshop, the update on remote learning and return to school guidance.
All right, so for those of you following along at home or in the audience, if you want to pull up this presentation, the link is there up on the screen. So it's HTTPS colon double backslash bit.ly, so bit.ly slash, and then it's D99, and then today's date, 8/3/2020. So HTTPS double backslash bit.ly slash D99, 8/3/2020. It's also available in PDF form off the district website under the board agenda for this evening under this item, okay? There's going to be a lot of information tonight. Welcome to the classroom of Hank Thiele and our two principals. We are going to do our best. As you can imagine, there's been a lot of communication to us that's out on social media. We have read nearly all of it and responded to most of it. In doing so, we have worked really hard over the last week to try to put together a presentation that answers as many of the questions that we have seen out there as possible in both the hybrid plan and the remote plan. Before we get into some of those details, I'd like to review the timeline of how we got here. There won't be a quiz at the end, so you don't have to remember any of the dates. But just a reminder, as I said in my opening statement, it was on June 23rd that the state provided us the overview or the rules. One of the things that I don't think most of the public understands is that schools are receiving this guidance in the same time that you are. So we're not getting advance drafts of it, we're not getting to see it before you are, it ends up in the public eye at the same time as us. Almost every time that the governor has gotten up to speak about education, before he is done speaking, my inbox is full and I have a few voicemail messages to respond to, before I even have a chance to digest what it is that we're being told. This is a very difficult environment to work in, and I understand. Look, it's a novel virus, it's a pandemic. I just want everybody kind of to understand why it seems like at times we as a district are playing from behind, okay? The dates are there to lead up to, the next real key date up there, all of the work goes up to July 20th. This is when we first started releasing the plan out to the public. That was the first time the board saw it in public, although they had seen a lot of this information as we worked on it. We kept the board unprecedentedly informed of what was going on, to the point where our administrative meetings that we were having over Zoom, we were recording so that board members could see what we were discussing in real time. No administration that I have ever known has ever done that with a board. It's just because of the weird times we're working in and the timelines that we're on that there's just no time to waste. Then the public is very aware of what happened over the next couple of weeks, as we came back and discussed it more the next week, and now we're back again this evening. One of the key dates that I want you to know is that last Friday, when that message went out to the community, that was the day that we had asked staff to submit any requests for accommodations, medical accommodations, or leave requests. Okay, that's, as I said in the opening statement, only two weeks from when the plan was released to the public. And if you have to get in to see your doctor or get a note from them, line everything up and get it in, that takes some time. One of the other things we'll talk about this evening is the other set of requests that were due at that time were staff members that expect to have challenges with childcare came in at that same date. So when we saw the number that we would have to work through, we'll explain the process of this in a second, that's when we changed the plan. And we think we have a plan. I know people are concerned with timelines, but we believe we can execute the plan you're going to hear tonight effectively. All right, so I kind of explained that timeline, but what I want to walk through is that for each one of these situations, it requires the staff member and our team to sit down and have a conversation about what leads to that leave request and/or that accommodation that they need. And that could range from anything from they need additional level of PPE or different schedule, all the way ranging to working from home, or they need to take a leave of absence, okay? Any one of those options is challenging to work through and requires a lot of work on both the employee's part and the administration's part to put together a plan that's good for kids in the end. If we end up with a work-from-home accommodation, so somebody has, we have teachers with health conditions where they're not going to be able to come into a school building with students. It is our goal as an administration to have our highly qualified, excellent teachers working with our students, whether that be in a remote format or an in-person format, we believe that our teachers are best, not just trying to find as many people as we can to fill those spots. We want our teachers there. But it might mean that in some cases, our teacher needs to work remotely, whether that be to a health accommodation or a childcare accommodation. And then they end up with a teacher's assistant in the classroom partnering with them. Okay, as we saw the number of these that we needed to work through, we've got a pair of some staff, we have staff here, there are a pair of professionals in our Support Staff Association that have worked with us, many of them for years, that will be great teachers' assistants for our teachers. They work alongside them all of the time. And we need to pair them up and get them working together and ready to come back. This is why you're hearing September 8th as a time to come back. Many of the staff that will be paired in those teacher assistant models are staff that our kids already know and already have relationships within the schools. This is not necessarily a bad thing, it's a different thing. But it takes some time to organize and to get straightened out. We also have some childcare concerns to work through. So in all of these, the first thing that we need to figure out, whether it's a healthcare or childcare issue, is are they able to work and maintain a high level for our students? And if so, we want them to be able to do that. And that's where we work through these other accommodations. It might be a change in a schedule, it might be teacher assistant, it might be any number of things that we need to work through with each individual staff member. It may end up, though, that a staff member can't provide a good experience for their students due to a medical condition or a family situation or childcare, or any number of these things. And if that's the case, we need to find alternative staffing for that teacher. That could be in the way of, we do have in our contract with our teachers, the opportunity to do what they call overloads, which would mean that a teacher who typically has five periods would pick up an additional sixth. And many of our teachers are prepared to do that, especially now, knowing that it's all hands on deck. But we need to organize that, and we need to let them know they're picking up another class and they need to prepare. Many teachers, it's just adding, just, it's just adding on another section of a course that they're already teaching. So it's more work, but it's not necessarily much more planning. It's always more planning to take on another course. So all of those things we need to work through, and as I said, they need to be done with the care and respect that our employees deserve. And we're going to take the time that it takes to do that. So we need to buy ourselves a little time. For some, it might be super simple to work through. We've been working with many of the staff over the last few weeks, especially the ones that reached out to us early. However, there's some that other schools are just releasing their plans to come back, some of those in our own communities, and their childcare needs are changing as a result of it. So we need this time to work through it, and we need people to be patient as we do that and know that things will be shifting and kids are going to be okay. We're going to have great teachers in front of them. And not only do we have great teachers, we have great teams of teachers. Our teachers work great together and will support one another to make sure that all of our kids have a fabulous learning experience, no matter how we staff the start of the school year. We also have teachers that had submitted for part-time going into this school year. So they had a specific family need where they needed part of the day off, and they were taking a reduced schedule and a reduced salary to do that. But now we've kind of thrown the schedule up in the air and changed things, and you're going to see a remote schedule that changes things again. We need to work with each of them to make sure that we're meeting what their needs are along with the needs of our kids. So I know it sounds like I'm talking a lot about adults right now, but adults are the ones that interact with our kids every day, and we need them to make sure that they're in a spot where they can do that effectively. And if they're not, then we need to get somebody there who can be, okay? So these are some of the challenges that are outlined here. Employees do have leave rights, okay? Our employees are essential employees, okay? Schools are essential employees. I saw that as a common misnomer in social media and in the emails I received over the course of the week, that teachers should be essential employees. They are. And whether they're designated that way during a pandemic or not, they always have been. Somebody submitting a leave request is not an indication that a teacher doesn't want to come back to work, okay? It's an indication that they have some unique life situation that we as an employer must work with them through. They have a right for that, and I don't know if that's my speaker or somebody else's, but you can see up there, there's several laws and acts that dictate how we work with these things, and we've been proactive in gathering these accommodation requests. Many other school districts, you're going to see this start to happen. We were proactive. We reached out to staff members before the plan was released to the public, just a couple days before, not much, right? And said, "Here's what we're thinking. Start submitting any accommodation requests that you might need so that we know how to plan effectively." There are a lot of schools out there that haven't done this, and they're going to be surprised when teachers and staff aren't able to return at the start of the school year. And you're going to hear about schools that call this audible on day two of the school year because they don't have enough staff. So I know it sounds like it's sudden and it's a quick change, but we are being as proactive as we can on this timeline. And I know that for some of you in the room, this is just making your point, that we should delay the beginning of the school year because of it, but we don't think we need to, and we'll explain why in a little bit. Okay, so as of today, as of when we put this presentation last together today, we had 108 total requests across our teachers and support staff. These are the staff that work with students every day, right? They're the ones that are closest to our kids. And a lot of people have been asking for some numbers. I can't give you all of the numbers, but I can give you some aggregate numbers here as to what it looks like. So we have 27 staff, due to medical or, no, these are due to medical reasons, cannot participate in in-person instruction. This is one thing I want to be clear about. If your teacher is not back, if your student's teacher is not back and is working remotely, that isn't necessarily an indicator that they have a medical issue. It could be any number of concerns that could end up with them working remotely. And it's really important that we tell you that, because they need their privacy protected as to what the reason is. and they're going to be surprised when teachers and staff aren't able to return at the start of the school year. And you're going to hear about schools that call this audible on day two of the school year because they don't have enough staff. So I know it sounds like it's sudden and it's a quick change, but we are being as proactive as we can on this timeline. And I know that for some of you in the room, this is just making your point, that we should delay the beginning of the school year because of it, but we don't think we need to, and we'll explain why in a little bit. Okay, so as of today, as of when we put this presentation last together today, we had 108 total requests across our teachers and support staff. These are the staff that work with students every day, right? They're the ones that are closest to our kids. And a lot of people have been asking for some numbers. I can't give you all of the numbers, but I can give you some aggregate numbers here as to what it looks like. So we have 27 staff due to medical or, no, these are due to medical reasons, cannot participate in in-person instruction. This is one thing I want to be clear about. If your teacher is not back, if your student's teacher is not back and is working remotely, that isn't necessarily an indicator that they have a medical issue. It could be any number of concerns that could end up with them working remotely. And it's really important that we tell you that because they need their privacy protected as to what the reason is why. Okay? So don't assume that it's a medical reason. Don't assume it's a childcare. It could be any number of reasons why a teacher has to work remotely. Okay? What we're going to try to do, as I said, is take that remote option if possible, pair them with another adult, and make it work. Okay? If that won't work, then there'll be a leave of absence. And there's a whole bunch of laws and acts and FMLA and FF-CRA and all these different acronyms that are rolling around out there that explain to us how we work through this with each staff member. We have 31 staff that need additional accommodations, which could be expanded PPE, or expanded social distancing, or a variety of different things related to that. Might be additional classroom technology that they feel that they can't project their voice because of the mask and a health issue. So they need an amplification system. It could be schedule adjustments, as I mentioned earlier, that we need to kind of move around their day to make it so that... Some people have health concerns where they need a break after a certain amount of time. And now we've restructured the schedule and changed things around so they can't teach for the amount of time that they had anticipated that they were going to last school year. We have approximately 50 staff members with childcare concerns. Some of those are just, they need a little time. Right? So in that first week, I can't be there for the first week in hybrid learning, but if I partner with you, Hank, can you welcome my kids to school? I'll zoom in with them and explain how things work. Hank, will you give them the materials that they need for the school year and help them get that first week started? And then I'll be back. You know, I'll work through the remote period, and then once I get everything straightened out, I'm back. I'm ready to go. I just need some time. Okay? Others, it might end up with all the way the other direction, that they need to take a leave of absence. And we've had a few staff in the last week come to that decision, that they can't both take care of their children at home and teach at the same time. So they've requested leaves of absences. Well, that requires us to then either assign overloads to teachers to cover those classes, or we need to go hire new staff to make that work. So these are all the things that we need time to work through. Many of them will be able to go through very quickly. Oh, that was surprising. Making sure the audience is awake. Many of these we'll have to work through, we can work through very quickly. Some of them will take a little more time. Board members, if you have questions, ask them as we go along because I don't know if I'll remember what I'm saying at the end of this. All right, so I've talked through many of these, but just the review of things that could end up as a result of these changes. They're all up there. I think I've said all of these already, so I won't bore you by saying them again, but that's kind of a summary of what those outcomes could be. All right, so for the hiring process, if we have to bring additional or new staff in, we already have positions posted. Okay, we also are reaching out to finalists. We had many amazing candidates for the openings that we had last spring, but we chose the best one at the end. But the second best, a lot of times, is really incredible, especially applying for a school district like ours. So we're reaching out to those folks to make sure that they, they're still looking for a job. If they are, might be a good person to bring in and get our first candidate and our second candidate in for a school year. So we have already all of those positions posted, and we're actively recruiting for those roles that we know we need to fill. Then we need to redefine some roles, especially for our support staff that might serve as teacher assistants, or teachers that might be covering for a short or long-term period of time for another teacher, or partnering with them, or any of those number of arrangements that we end up with. For leave of absences, we will be hiring teachers for an entire school year. Okay, for most of them. If they're out for the whole year, then we'll need to bring in a new teacher or reshuffle to cover for all of those things.
I have a question.
Yes.
I called you today and I didn't ask this one. For those teachers that are hired...
Can you speak into the microphone, Sherelle?
Look at me, I'm not doing it right. For those who are hired to replace leave of absence teachers for that year, once that year is up, are they just back, obviously back in the pool to look for more teaching work?
Yeah, all first-year teachers are on a year-by-year contract up until they earn tenure. So they'd be in the same position as all of our first-year teachers at that point. And at the end of the school year, then we'd make a determination if they were sticking around because somebody else was leaving or retiring, or if they did a great job and they're fabulous teachers, we want to keep them, right? But if we don't have a space for them, then yes, we would release them. All right. So I just, I want to review. This was something that I heard often over the course of the last week in the literally thousands of emails I received, was that we should have known that this was a possibility. And we did. On July 20th, when we rolled out the skeleton of this plan to the community, I shared with everybody that there was three scenarios that could result in us needing to go remote for a short or a long period of time. Changing health conditions, availability of students. When we went and surveyed students and families and said, "Are you opting into the fully remote model?" If 90% of our families said that they wanted to opt into a fully remote model, it would have been ridiculous to try to run a hybrid model. So student availability would have dictated that. And staff availability, we brought up at that time, that we knew that this could be a challenge when we get here. And as I said, many schools are seeing this right now. It's just a nature of the world that we're living in, the timeline that we're on, and how the nature of the work goes with employee rights and employee leaves. So in the opening, you heard several discussions about this, and honestly, we did. Here's the things that we considered towards the end of last week as we started to realize that we were going to be challenged having enough staff to safely open the start of the school year for a long period of time in the hybrid model. So we discussed through the one that we presented to you on Friday, which is the idea of the one-week hybrid to kick off the year, then go to remote for a couple of years, well, a couple of years, a couple of weeks. I know some people think it's a couple of years, a couple of weeks. Well, we learn in that model too, right? Look, I've said from the beginning to the public, I think at some point this year, we're going to end up in remote for a period of time. I don't think that that is the best way for our kids to learn. But I do think, and you're going to hear why, we'll be much better at it this year. So having a week to practice the hybrid and to get back and get rolling, and then a couple of weeks to practice remote and to set up returning to a safe and effective hybrid model, and making corrections from what we learned the first week. Look, I'm a great believer in you roll with what the world gives you, and you make the best of it, you learn from it, and you keep pushing forward. I think that the model that I presented to the community is exactly that. Look, the situation gave us something different than what we were talking about a couple of weeks ago. Fine, we adapt, we learn, we grow, we adjust. We put together a great plan for our community and for our kids, and that's what we do next. And if the situation changes, we'll do it again. And this whole school year is going to be that for our kids, for our teachers, for our families, for our community, for our world. So, look, our kids are going to roll. They always do. Our kids are so good. You saw them tonight. You saw just a smattering of our kids tonight. Our kids will do whatever we need them to do. They always do. Our kids never disappoint. Never. And I'm very confident in this plan. I know it seems disjointed, but if you look for the positives in it rather than the negatives, you'll see some really positive things that happen. We get kids back to school. They'll connect with most, if not all, of their teachers. Some of them will get to hang out with the superintendent for a day. How awesome is that? Right? Yeah, thanks, Nancy. Not so much. Just ask my own kids. Then we'll go into remote learning. We'll give that a try for a couple of weeks. We'll learn from it. We'll approve on it. We'll give families an opportunity to provide feedback on both examples. And then hopefully, if health conditions are good and everything is meeting the metrics that the IDPH releases, then we're back at it under hybrid for as long as we can do that. It gives everybody a chance to prepare for that new model, and it gives us time to pair our teachers and adults together, gives time for kids to get to know their teachers in the remote format. And we're going to explain to you how that's going to work this evening. Okay? And then I'm hoping that on September 8th, we're back. Only though if the health metrics allow us to do that because we know that that is a changing target. And we'll explain how those metrics will be decided in a little while. Okay, you can see the other two options we considered, and a few of you recommended this tonight. We could go fully remote, but that doesn't, we have been saying all along, getting our kids back to school is our number-one priority, that that's how we know that kids are served best. And you heard some of the reasons for that tonight from the audience. Okay, we believe strongly that kids need to be back at school. That's why we've been fighting so hard for this hybrid model. That's why we have been working to put this thing together and to staff it and to make sure it works. Look, going remote for an administrative team is so much easier than figuring out hybrid. Everything from the PPE we need to provide, to the rules, to cleaning procedures, to schedules, to getting our teachers prepared to be confident in this model is so much harder than just flipping it remote. Look, if we flipped remote today or tomorrow, I'll go on vacation because my team has got it from here. Okay? Hybrid is way harder, but it's worth it. It's worth it to have our kids here with us, and I truly believe that as your superintendent. My administrative team truly believes that. A lot of people believe that. And I know it's a balance between that and what's healthy and safe. We think we can do it. We truly believe we can do it healthy and in a safe, a healthy and safe manner. We've met with the health experts to make sure that that can happen. All summer, lots and lots of time with health experts in the DuPage County Health Department. I wouldn't be bringing kids back if I didn't think we could keep them safe. So I want to do that. That's why we don't want to go to the fully remote model. Yes, Nancy?
So, to be clear, the option one of recommended, when we say learning for one week, remote learning, and for two weeks, and then return to hybrid learning, just to be, you said this, but just to be very, very clear, that is dependent on the health conditions of the time.
Correct.
That is dependent, and I don't mean to steal your thunder, but I know you're going to be talking about discussions with the DuPage County Health Department.
Mm-hmm.
One of my concerns about option one, and I am very afraid of COVID. I talk with people every day of my work life who have COVID, is that people are going to walk away from this today and say, "Gosh darn it, we'll be remote for two weeks, but after that, we're for sure coming back." And that is certainly not the case. I know that's not what you're saying.
That's not what I'm saying.
But I don't think we can make that statement clearly enough because we cannot put anybody in jeopardy. We cannot put students in jeopardy, or staff, or administrators, or whomever.
And we have said from the beginning, just to be clear, if we go back to July 20th, that even if the board had approved on July 20th the hybrid model that night to come back, that we would be monitoring the health metrics leading right up until the school year and after the school year started. And if at any point that the DuPage County Health Department or the Illinois Department of Public Health told us that it was not safe to be here for in-person learning, that it would change to a fully remote model. Right? That's what we've said from the beginning. That continues. So we could return in a hybrid model and be back for a day, and conditions change in Illinois or in DuPage County, and the health experts say we're done with in-person learning, and then we're done until they say it's okay to come back again. All right? So like I said, we're all going to have to be flexible because it could be back and forth, depending on how it goes. But absolutely, we're working closely with those health experts, and we're going to lean on them to determine if we should come back or if we should leave.
And to be clear at this point, the health experts have said that we are in phase four. They have not said it is safe or it is unsafe. In fact, there's been a total lack of direction on that.
Well, Illinois State Board of Education says, "Get students back as much as possible, and it's safe to do so if you follow these safety guidelines," which include the six feet of social distancing, the masks with the PPE. We're adding the additional layer of the face shields for when six feet cannot definitely be maintained. And then the hand hygiene, washing your hands. And then we've added all of the other safety measures like increasing air circulation and all of those things throughout our buildings. So we've gone to extreme measures to make sure that people can be safe. So that's what Illinois says.
Yeah, I just want to be clear because what they all, with CDC, ISBE, APA, American Pediatric Association, everybody says, "When is it safe to do so?"
Correct.
Not...
No, not just send everybody back to school. No.
Just to be clear, so everybody understands.
No, and that was, as we started looking at those guidelines, that option of sending in a school this size, remember? And this is, I keep hearing from people, "Well, this school's doing that, and this school's doing this, and this..." Look, we need to build a plan for our schools with the physical layout, the number of students, our community, what we feel we can do safely. That's what we've given you in a hybrid plan. You can look at any other school district and say they picked something different, and they went through the same exercise we did to come up with a plan that they think is right for them. Look, we've been tasked as an administration with something nobody's been asked to do, and I think we've risen to that challenge in the plan that we've presented. But I'm not overconfident. And I'm not bold enough to tell you that we got it absolutely right. Because if we got it wrong, we're going to change it, we're going to correct it, we're going to fix it. And if we have to, we're going to send everybody home. And we're going to switch to remote learning. And all the concerns that you raised tonight about the emergency remote learning that happened last spring, we're going to, you're going to have a whole different experience this year. And Ed and Janice, pretty soon when they get, they kick me off of the soapbox here, will explain to you the things we're going to do instructionally to make this a better experience for our kids. And a lot of our handcuffs have been removed that the state put on us last spring. So you're going to hear that this is going to be different. And we're going to explain to you why it's a good experience, no matter how we come back.
So Hank, quick question before we move off of metrics. So if we were at September 8th right now, with the metrics as they exist today, we would be in the hybrid model.
So that's a great loaded question. You're stealing my thunder for later. So the guidelines as we know them today, yes.
Today.
Because that would be following the Illinois Department of Public Health guidelines on phase four and all of those things that you see reported out on each of the health regions, right? What we understand is that sometime this week, the Illinois Department of Public Health will release guidelines specific to schools. Okay, we don't know, you'll learn them in real time with me.
We do, yes.
So leave me the voicemail. I'll be watching the governor's presentation with you. And we're expecting to hear this week guidelines specific for schools when it's safe to come back in in person and when it's not supposed to. And the way we understand, remember, this is just in the conversations we're having with people. This is, I'm not talking directly with the Illinois Department of Public Health. What we believe, or what we've been told will happen this week is that we will get guidelines based on the local county and maybe community level as to when the metrics indicate that we should no longer be in-person learning, and then as well at the school level.
So thank you for bringing it up because that was going to be my question. We heard from Sir Number Seven, some of the local...
Number Seven was Rich.
Okay, thank you. I didn't write down any names. So we heard some of the local numbers, so that was going to be my question. Are we going to, I know there's Illinois numbers, but we also know that the numbers are not created equally in every community. So will we be reporting, we can report Illinois, but will we also be reporting community-wide numbers?
Yeah, in the conversations we've been having with the Health Department and other health experts, is that the expectation is that, and don't hold me to this because I'm not making them, right? Is that the guidelines will be released at those granular levels, right? And then we...
So which ones will be released, what?
At those granular levels. So at the state level, the county. I'm less confident about the local community level. You know, that's been discussed, but I'm hearing more about, and you've seen all of those metrics, right? That we're with Kane and DuPage. I would imagine that we'd be looking at metrics like that. And then that we're supposed to also get guidance for the local school when we start to see any type of illness, what it means for us and what we're supposed to do to report it, and then determine if we stay open or switch, or open for in-person or open for remote. Right? We're not closing under any of those. All right? School's open for the whole year, one way or another.
Hank, do you anticipate receiving any sort of input or review about specific plans that school districts are putting together? Hank, do you anticipate receiving any sort of input or review about specific plans that school districts are putting together?
From the health department or, no, they, this, this has been a great relationship with us and the health experts. We as school leaders are trusting the health experts. We're trusting the health department. They have trained for this, they have drilled for this as much as they can. And then they're very carefully listening to us about how school needs to run. And, and there has been hours and hours of wonderful conversation with Karen Aiella and her team at the DuPage County Health Department where they sit and try to understand how school works and what we're trying to accomplish. And then they apply to that what the health concerns are under COVID and how we can make those two things work together, okay? And I have no doubt you've seen some of the things within our own community. If the health department feels like a school is doing something incorrectly, they're going to call us out, and rightfully so. So far, we've been able to come up with a plan that I feel meets their guidelines, and we've talked through this and we'll keep kids safe. But if at any point we're not, we're, we're not bringing people back.
One of the things I would just echo is that the hybrid plan does indeed follow all of the recommendations of the CDC, which are consistent with ISBE and APA and everybody else. It's just a matter of risk, but the actual activities are, point out.
The actual what?
The actual activities, the distancing, the this, the that, are spot on to what the regulations are. So that's encouraging.
Yeah, right.
It's good work. You know what I mean.
Right, I know.
I'm not surprised that you did good work, but it's good work.
Thank you. Option three, which was brought up tonight, was the idea of delaying the school year. As your administrative team, Ed, Janice, I, Gina, Rob, like our whole administrative team, kids are ready to get back to school. You heard it from them tonight. They've been gone for a very long time. Delaying it another three weeks just puts it off and just causes, you saw what happened in just delaying the decision to tonight, what happened in our community. We are very uncomfortable with the idea of delaying the start of the school year. It's more turmoil, it's more unrest, it's more unknowns. You know, are we coming back then or not? Look, let's get back, let's get, we're, we'll be all hands on deck. Your kids will get a great experience in that first week. Our staff that need to work remotely are going to work remotely in the next couple of, we'll get it all straightened out. As I told you, we'll work through that process, we'll be good. I also have major concerns about families. This summer has been incredibly taxing on families. And this has not been much of a summer at all for many of us. And by delaying the start of the school year, we take this summer and project it into next summer. I'd like to give our families, hopefully by next summer, we're coming out of this thing. And I'd like to give families a summer where they return to normalcy. There's a lot of healing left to be done in a lot of ways. And delaying the start of the school year delays that time of getting back to normalcy next summer. And we talked about this a lot as a team, this is another one. If you're going to pick what's easiest for administrators, we're going to delay the start of the school year. That gives us lots of time to get things lined up and ordered. But if you're going to do what's right by kids, you're going to do everything in your power to get them back to school in the timeframe that they intended to come back to school. You heard it from the kids tonight, they're ready to be back. So when you hear that from the kids, that opens up to you option one. And that's why we're recommending that one tonight, as long as it's safe to do that option. Alright, so we didn't share with you on Friday exactly what was going to happen in that first week because we were still working on it. Remember, we're working in real time. Alright, so this is what we, we've kind of worked through that we think week one will look like, okay? You know that this is going to be a tough year for freshmen, okay? The two biggest classes this will be roughest on this year will be our freshmen and our seniors, okay? We want to make sure that our freshmen come in and get started on the right foot. Look, falling behind freshman year is like one of the worst things that could happen to a student. So we want to make sure that they have a great experience, especially in that first week. So all along, we've talked about that first day would be just for our freshmen. Our grades 10 through 12, that they would work remotely on that first day. Because there's a lot of things, some videos to watch on mask protocol and activities and how things are going to work differently. There's a lot to learn about going back to school with COVID going on, okay? So grades 10 through 12 on that Monday, they're going to get a lot of that information. Our freshmen, our grade nine, will come back half in the morning, half in the afternoon, go through their schedule, meet their teachers, get their supplies. Then freshmen are working remotely the rest of the week, which might sound weird when we're saying getting students back and getting them in is the most important thing to do for freshman year. But we're really looking at this as an opportunity to do freshman orientation in a new and important way. You see, what we typically do with ninth grade is over the course of the first 10 weeks, we do a lot of things to teach them of how to be successful in high school. Instead, we're going to move that into the first week of school. And we're going to give them everything that they need to be successful right off the bat. It's going to be a boot camp for freshmen, okay? It'll be virtual, be a lot of Zoom calls with counselors or meeting with deans or meeting with the principal. It could be any number of things over the course of that week that's happening remotely in the mornings. But they're going to get a, a week of freshman orientation activities going on throughout the week in the mornings. And then in the afternoon, they'll join the remote sessions with their teachers, okay? And then grades 10 through 12, Tuesday through, through Friday, will follow the new hybrid model. What this allows us to do is in that first week, we bring back 25% of our students on Monday. That makes sure we have plenty of staff to make sure that our freshmen are well taken care of on the first day. But then by freshmen being remotely the last four days, and that frees up all of our freshman teachers to make sure that we're taking care of grades 10 through 12 while they're here during that time. Because as you heard, we have some staffing issues to work on. So this is how we get enough staff between that and Ed, Janice, and I getting to hang out in classrooms for a couple of days, right? We'll make sure that our kids all have a great experience, are all set up, ready to go, that they connect with their regular teacher even though that they're not there, and we'll kick the year off right. And then, as we've talked, yeah, go ahead.
So freshmen will have no, no classes, they'll have no in-person classes after Monday?
Correct. They'll come in.
Have remote work.
They'll have plenty of remote work for the rest of that week. And a plenty of remote interaction, probably with staff that they might not have met until months into the school year. They'll get to know right away from, from the beginning, right? Know what resources are available to them and, and those kinds of things. Then two and three, fully remote, you'll get to hear more about that tonight when I stop talking and Ed and Janice take over. They're probably wondering if that'll ever happen. And then week four, hopefully, if health conditions allow us to, we will return to the hybrid model, okay? So that's the plan for the first four weeks of school.
So again, I, we do this all the time. We both know what we're going to say. So absent any direction from the DuPage County or Illinois Department of Public Health, right now, we are in the yellow spot. We're, we're in the warning phase, the documented community transmission for, because we have, as of Friday, because it's a rolling average of seven days, 73 cases per 100,000 people. So absent, if, if in fact, DuPage does not come forward, or the state does not come forward and say, you know what? In our best estimates, these are the parameters for when it's safe to be in school and when, when we want to look at closing it. What are our options then?
Then it goes to the metrics that the DuPage County Health Department's following now, which is positivity rates, ICU beds, hospital beds, all of those, those, what are they, five different metrics?
With the expectation that we would meet, we would have to fail on two of them in order to close?
No, with the expectation that the DuPage County Health Department would tell us when it was no longer safe to bring students back in person. They would be the ones making the recommendation to us at that point.
So my concern, as I keep saying, is they haven't done it so far.
No, because they believe that the numbers, I talked to them today. They believe it's safe with proper planning to bring students back to school if it's today. So that's, that's the group I've been working with all summer, and that's who I'll continue to trust to tell us if it's safe to bring students back in person or not until we get other guidelines from Illinois Department of Public Health, which I expect, as we've been told, will be coming soon. And then whatever those metrics are specifically for schools, then that's what we'll start following. But until then, it's constant conversations with the DuPage County Health Department. And this is, look, this is what businesses are doing. This is, they're, they're the resource, they're telling businesses when they can no longer be open and when they should, should send everybody home, right? We're no different, just a different industry, but we're following the same experts. Alright, any other questions on that one? Alright, so just to review, this is what we've talked about for the schedules of how they would work. So Group A would come in on Tuesday, Thursday. I want to point out up there, we've used this term independent learning. Don't think that that is kids sitting around doing nothing, okay? There will be plenty of things that students are working on in that independent learning block, whether that's on their own, with small groups, whether that's in virtual rooms. Could be any number of things that are going on during that time. Students will be busy. They will have a lot of work to do. The remote learning period, you're going to hear about what that is, and many of the concerns that you've already expressed tonight will be addressed soon. The Group B schedule is just the opposite, okay? So, to review, at the end of the night tonight, I'll be making a recommendation to the board, and then they can either modify it or accept it, that we follow this recommended plan. And there's going to be a few more granular details that show up by the end of the night. So, to review, week one is hybrid. You meet nearly all your teachers, you get your supplies. If you've chosen the fully remote model, we will have a, a plan for within the first couple of days of school for you to come through a drive-through model and get all of your supplies, okay? So we're not forgetting about the people that have checked, selected fully remote. You'll get that within kind of the same timeframe, everybody's getting their stuff. We're also working on a, a process for all students to come and get their, their PPE, their two masks and their two face shields in advance of coming back to school. And details on that will be coming out soon. So we'll have a drive-through pickup, so everybody has all of the materials that they need, which are two masks, two face shields, and the self-certification slips, alright? This is the slip that after your parents check and make sure you don't have any symptoms and take your temperature in the morning, they give you a pass that allows you to come to school. And even if you show up with that pass, we might still take your temperature. But if you show up without it, we definitely are. And we're going to ask you, here are the line, here are the symptoms related to COVID. Are you experiencing any of these? And if you have a temperature, you're over 100.4, or you're experiencing any of those symptoms, we're going to quarantine you in school, and then we're going to send you back home, okay? So, all of those things will be picked up in advance of the, the beginning of the school year. Then we've talked about the remote learning for the two weeks. And we're going to now, because you're hearing about all of this tonight, today was the day that families had to commit until remote learning. We're going to put that off until this coming Friday so you can learn what remote learning actually fully is before you have to commit. And if somebody is committed and they are like, wait, no, now I want to do hybrid, they just have to let us know, and they, and we can change that. But then once the school year starts, well, actually, after we've got that locked in after August 7th, once you've committed to that, it's for the first nine weeks of school, okay? Because we need to get everything lined up and teachers prepared and everything else. And then you can see here, week four, there it is spelled out, Nancy, right? If IDPH health guidelines and metrics are being met and staffing is complete, we'll return back in week four. If not, we'll remain in remote learning until those conditions are met. We've talked about all of those things. And any suspension of the hybrid model results in transmission, transition back to the remote model, alright? So we could be back and forth between these throughout the year, depending on what those metrics are and what the health department is telling us. So any questions for the board, this is going to come back at the end of the night, is close to a recommendation. Yes, Terry?
Isn't, isn't going back and forth between the hybrid and the remote very confusing for students and parents? I mean, wouldn't it be better to stay in one model?
I think it's best to have kids here whenever we can have them here. So I think we need to do whatever it takes to get kids in the door. So I think once we transition to remote, we keep looking at that data for when we can get kids back. And then when we can, we get them back. Look, kids and teachers, they can do anything. I have, I have no doubt that they will roll with this and they will be just fine. We, come on, students, how many weeks during the school year do you have an alternative schedule? It's like every other week, there's an alternative schedule.
Dr. Deely, another thing you'll hear in a few moments when we talk about our planning, that was one of the considerations the planning committee was thinking about when creating a remote plan, knowing there's a chance we'd have to be able to transition back and forth. So, that was given consideration by the committee as we were planning the fully remote to try to link them. And one thing you'll see when Janice talks about the fully remote schedule, we've already made a recommendation to change what Monday looks like in the hybrid schedule based on that for that very reason.
But to Terry's point, I'm assuming though that that decision to go back and forth would be maybe on a week basis. It's not going to be Monday, you're going remote, Tuesday hybrid, Wednesday remote. We'd be doing that full block weeks at a time.
Yeah, the schedule will likely be full block weeks at a time, right? You're going to see in a second that, okay, so if, if we're in a hybrid week and all of a sudden Wednesday, the health department or the metrics or whatever say, we can't go back. Well, we'll be remote the remainder of that week, but keep the hybrid meeting times through the end of that week. And then if we can't come back to hybrid next week, then we'll switch to the remote model for that week, right? And then we'll reassess if we can come back, right? It won't be one day hybrid, one day remote, one day hybrid, one day, nobody can do that, right? But we also don't want to have total chaos, right? So if we enter a week with the schedule, that's going to be the schedule for that week. And then we'll communicate what we're going to end up with for the next week, right? And that's how it'll work. You're going to see here, like when we were looking at, when we're looking at this schedule, that schedule is built around the parameters of bringing kids back to school and what their schedule needs to look like, what teacher's schedules need to look like. The, you know, the idea that kids that don't have first period class could stay home and come late. Periods that have fourth period class could leave early, right? There's a lot of assumptions and logic built into the hybrid in-person model. It's built around the idea of you're going to have people here. You're about to see, and I'm stealing their lead a little bit. When we get to the hybrid model, it's built around the idea of kids won't be here. So the parameters are all different. So if you're going to build the best remote learning model, you're going to build that for remote learning. So you're going to see that in a second. When we build the best hybrid model, you're going to build that for in-person learning. The two schedules can't be the same because the priorities and the goals and the structure are not the same, okay? To say one has got to be like the other would be square peg round hole, okay? Alright, questions for me on the review of the hybrid and any staffing things that I didn't answer in the, the process? Alright, I'm going to turn this over now to Ed and Janice, and I'll take a step back for a few minutes here. Or maybe I won't, I can't. Nope, not yet? Ah, I thought I was off the hook. Alright. So hybrid model, just some clarifications on this model before we get into the remote learning model, okay? So here's the why. And we've talked a lot about this, I'm not going to read it all to you because we've talked about it all already tonight, okay? But this is, here's the list why we think we need to bring kids back to school in the hybrid model. Here's some common questions that we have heard over the course of the week. The idea that students will just spread the virus when they're not at school and bring it to school. As we talked about with Nancy earlier, our plan prioritizes the protection of all students, okay? And follows the guidelines that are built to protect people from others that might have COVID, alright? That's what the, all these safety protocols we're taking are to protect people from COVID. The question kept coming, why face shields on top of this? There's the line from the CDC that talks about it. Some people may choose to use a face shield when sustained close contact with other people is expected. We expect that on our buses, we expect during our passing periods, that there, it's going to be hard to keep that six feet of social distance. We'll encourage kids to do it, but you've seen, people are people. They clump together, they lose track of what six feet means. So in those... So in those spots where we anticipate that it might be hard for people to keep the six feet of social distancing, we add the mask piece on top of it to add that extra layer of protection.
So what happens if somebody, because we've gotten countless screenshots of discussions where people say, you know, social distancing is worthless, I don't make my kids wear masks. What happens if we have students who refuse to wear PPE?
If you refuse to follow the safety guidelines, you have chosen fully remote learning.
So I'm walking down the hall, I whip off my mask.
We'll talk to you once about how important it is. We'll call your parents and say, this needs to be corrected, this can't happen again. And then after that, you have chosen fully remote learning. That's it. I mean, this is a pandemic, right? Feedback from students and parents heard this a couple of times tonight. We will have an opportunity, in whatever model we're in, to have open feedback and direct feedback from students and parents. We'll be monitoring this actively as the year goes on. And then we talked about this multiple times today of when we go remote only. All right, this has been the major, another major concern that I've heard over the course of the last couple of weeks, and rightfully so. When we rolled out the remote plan on the 20th, we expected to gather a whole bunch of questions and comments and update our FAQs and come back tonight and share with you more details about remote learning and the plans. Remember, we were two weeks into our planning at that point. Now we're four or five weeks into the planning, right? So we know more, we're able to share more. So some questions we've heard about this idea of documented medical conditions, students get more, you know, why do they get more than somebody else? Well, what they get is, we have to sit down and meet with each of those families and talk through what those medical conditions are. Remember how we talked about when staff submit requests for accommodations, and we sit down with our staff members and we have a conversation of why, and we figure out what the right thing is to do for them? We're going to have to do the same thing with students that submit that they have medical accommodations and figure out what we need to do to meet their needs. Their needs might be met through our fully remote model. There might not be any additional accommodations that we have to provide. Some might need, I'll give you an example of an accommodation that might happen, is you might have a student that has vision limitations, and they need a screen larger than their Chromebook screen if they're going to be learning on it for a long period of time. And if we have a documented note from a doctor that says that that's what we need to do, then we've got to find that student a bigger screen, right? That could be an example of an accommodation. And there's all kinds of different ones that we'd have to work through. Every year, we have students that have medical accommodations that we must meet. We're no different this year, okay? We work through each of them, we find out if they're valid, we find out what a kid needs, and we provide that resource, okay? To say that we are discriminating against other students that don't need those accommodations is wrong, okay? We meet the needs of every student's individual needs. If you don't need additional accommodations, you don't need additional accommodations, okay? We provided the accommodation through the remote learning experience, okay? If you're choosing to participate in remote learning only, you're going to have a good experience, okay? But in my first meeting, I've said since the first meeting and multiple times tonight, the administration believes in-person learning is superior to remote learning. So if I then get up in front of you and say, it's going to be just as good for fully remote learners, that's the hypocritical leader that everybody complains about. I can't get in front of you and say, fully remote learning is going to be as great as the hybrid or as great as in-person learning, because I don't believe that. I think it's going to be great. And I think kids are going to learn, and they're going to have a great experience in it, and we're going to do whatever we need to do to make sure that kids learn. But I'm not going to tell you it's as good as getting kids back to school. And for people that want me to come out and say that, I'm not. I'm not going to lie to you, okay? But it's going to be good, and your kids will be fine with us. They're going to be more than fine. They're going to have a great experience with our teachers this year and with our schools, okay? If you're choosing remote only, you're generally not participating in in-person activities, okay? You're in that time during the day when you're coming back. But there's all kinds of other opportunities to interact with our teachers in this model. One of the key things that we'll expect our fully remote learning students to leverage is, all of our teachers will have office hours, okay? So in person, teachers are going to be working with somewhere between 12 and 15 students. If you're fully remote, you're not one of those students, you're at home. Well, we have an hour with 12 to 14 students. If you then arrange for your time to connect with your teacher during their office hours, a single student can catch up on what a whole class did really quickly, right? So that would be the opportunity. And when we said that parents are going to have to be more involved in this if you choose fully remote, that's one of the examples we're talking about. You've got to check with your kid and make sure that they're tuning into the office hours and connecting with their teachers. And when the teacher says, hey, you know, can you connect at 5:00 on Wednesday to cover what you missed and what the whole class did on Wednesday? That you're going to help them get there and connect and be with their teacher at that time. And you're going to hold your kid accountable for that experience because you're not sending them to school for the in-person piece. But when we offer the other resources, you've got to help us make sure that your student takes advantage of those things. That's what we're talking about on the 20th. We weren't saying that fully remote students were going to be left behind or minimized or forgotten. Yes, Nancy?
So a lot of what I read, and maybe you're going to talk about this later, and I certainly can hold my question, but a lot of the notes that I saw, especially those that came from students, when they talked about, they didn't call it that, when they talked about in-person activities, I thought was kind of maybe the expectation that if you come back to school under the hybrid model, it's going to be just like it used to be.
It will not be.
I'm going to go to band, and I'm going to play with all my friends. I'm going to go to chemistry class, and we're going to stand in pods. So are we at some point going to talk about what those are going to look like so people really understand that it is not going to be like it used to be?
Yeah, it's not. Yeah, there, let's be very clear, this school year will not be like any other school year, all right? You're only going to be in a classroom when you're in person with half of your class. You're going to do half of your learning with your, the time you interact with your teacher, some of that will be in person unless you're fully remote, and it's all remote, okay? Some of it will be remote for the hybrid folks, and some of it's going to be working on your own, okay? Or working with your peers. But if our students stop and think about what their class time typically is like, if you look at a class period, okay? There is a time where there's direct teacher instruction, and they're setting you up and they're working with you. Then there's a lot of time where you're off working on your own and the teacher's checking in with you. There's times where you're working on your own, there's times when you're working with your peers. We're going to have all of those things going on, it's just in different time and space over the course of the hybrid days, okay? Students are used to, they show up, they usually get some direction from their teachers, maybe some content, some points, and kids get to work on something, an activity, a project, maybe work together, maybe present. All of those same things are going to happen, but it's going to get shoved around in different time and space over a couple of days, periods of time. And it's going to look different. In the hybrid model, it's going to be, you're not going to be here with all your friends. All the kids know that, right? Because we split A through L, M through Z, right? It's not the same. The activities are all going to be different. I don't even know what we do yet with dances and homecoming and that. We've got to figure all of that out, right? This year is different. And know that if you're choosing the hybrid model, you're choosing something different than what you've experienced in the past. If you're choosing fully remote, you're choosing something different than what you've experienced in the past. We cannot offer you right now the experience that you have had in the past. It is not safe to do so, okay? So we all just have to be okay. As I said before, it's going to be different, we're going to roll with it, we're going to make the best out of it, and hey, we're going to learn some cool new stuff. We're going to learn some ways of learning that we never expected were amazing. And we're going to learn stuff that, well, that didn't work, okay? Adapt, change, grow, get better. That's what this year is all about. Okay, so we've heard a lot about ensuring equity for the fully remote learner. So some things, obviously, you're not going to get the in-person, that's the selection, whether it's no fault of your own because of a medical reason or because you're just not feeling safe coming back to school right now, okay? Even though that you've opted out of that in-person experience, you're still going to have access to all of our teachers and support personnel, all of our counselors, all our social workers, our librarians, our tech staff, you have access to all of them, okay? And you have access to all of your teachers. You have access to our curriculum and materials. You're going to be learning the same content materials that the students that are here in the hybrid model are learning, okay? It's the same content, it's the same stuff. Obviously, we're going to have to reshuffle and change and adapt things to make it fit into whatever model we end up with. But your kids are going to be okay at the end of this. They're going to learn, they're going to grow, they're going to improve, we're going to get them the skills they need, and the whole world, the whole world, is going through this at the same time. No kid is going to be behind some other community. Every community is chasing right now, okay? But we will make sure that this community is well-supported and well-educated in whatever model we have. Other resources, we talked about the office hours, we're also working on putting together virtual resource rooms, spots where kids can drop in and get help from teachers or teacher assistants during that independent learning time, or, you know, if they're not participating in in-person, then they could go into one of those virtual resource rooms. One of the things I want to point out is that teachers may, they may ask their students to participate during the in-person time with the class at that point. It depends on what the teacher is doing at that point, okay? If they're meeting one-on-one with kids, they could meet one-on-one with your kid too during that time and just have them zoom in and do it, right? If they're doing a lecture, maybe they do stream it live, or maybe they record it and play it later, okay? If they're working in small groups, maybe the two or three kids per class that are in a small group, they're their own little small group during that time, okay? Or it could be, look, you're working on your own during in-person, and I'll check back in with you later and take care of you, okay? Time and space and what happens is going to be super different and super flexible for now until we come back to what school used to be. One of the key things I want to point out is that people who choose the fully remote model have the opportunity after nine weeks to come back to our classrooms, okay? One of the things that I think was missed, and maybe we didn't, we didn't do a good job of promoting it, and I want to kind of toot our own horns a little bit here. Many other school districts, their fully remote model is they are outsourcing you to a third-party online company. And they are outsourcing you to that company for an entire semester, okay? Many high schools are doing that, and it is a, and this is a high school thing, okay? At the elementary level, it's a totally different thing, okay? But at the high school level, all of those companies have a much more narrowed-down course, a set of courses, okay? So you're not going to take ceramics, okay, with the online company. You're not. You're going to have to drop ceramics and pick up something else, okay? And then you're going to go work with that online company and their teachers and their modules, and you're going to complete the course. And at the end of the first semester, those schools will take those grades and put them into your transcript, okay? And if you were in AP Chem, well, maybe you get Chem now, okay? If you were in one of our cool reading courses, well, now you're in English III. Our cool courses, you're now in English III, right? The course catalogs are not the same. What we have offered is better than equitable, okay? We have offered the opportunity for our students to stay in their courses with their teachers, learning our content, whether they're here in person or they're fully remote. And after nine weeks, if they feel like it's safe to come back, they can come back. And if three weeks in, families decide, whoa, Deely was nuts, this is not safe, then opt into fully remote, and you'll stay with your teacher, with the kids in that class, you'll keep having that experience. I think we have put together a far more robust fully remote learning program than our peers, okay? The other thing that you're seeing is schools split between their hybrid students and their remote learning students. And what they do is they carve out a set of curriculum that you have to choose from much in the same way. So you're working with their teachers and their curriculum, but it's a narrowed-down selection of what their online course content is. We have tried, as crazy as possible, to keep kids in the courses that they want to take, with their classmates, with our teachers. And we're providing the supports and the ways to make it so that kids can be successful in both ways. So I feel like, I know that it was not a lot to go on, on the 20th, but I hope that this helps the community understand that we are trying to do right by our kids and our families in both models that we are offering here, and providing opportunities to go back and forth between them at certain points, right? So that families have those options. And I'm really proud of the work that our administrative team has done to provide those options to our students and families, okay? It's a heck of a lot more work than just calling up a company and saying, send me the link to send to my families to sign. And I don't want to minimize, like, school's got to choose what they can support, okay? So it might sound like I'm trashing the school next door, I'm not. Like, maybe their staff and their team can't pull that off, but I believe we can and we should offer that to our families, so we're going to do that, okay? I'm only talking about us now, not everybody else, okay? But I think we've offered a great product for our families.
Thank you so much for this, Hank. Thank you.
Yes, Nancy?
Two, one statement, two questions.
Yeah.
My first statement is just this whole idea about a lot of families holding off on remote. What I've heard from many families was, they were waiting to the last minute, and I would assume this is true for our teachers as well, they're waiting to the last minute to get as much information, to make a decision.
Yeah, that's fair.
So we really can't say, well, only 10% wanted this or 15% because...
No.
People just were waiting.
Which is why we've also extended the window to Friday, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just want to recognize it. But I did want to ask one question, because this came up from a couple people today, and it was in some of the, many of the letters that we received. And maybe, and again, if this is not the right place to talk about it, we can talk about it further on, but one of the concerns that I've heard for those families and students who elect to go remote is, what about the social supports? What about the counselors? What about, somebody was talking about abuse, checking in, you know, being present for other students to come to. Can you speak a little bit to how we're going to kind of buoy up that portion of, that important portion of it?
Yeah, I don't want to steal too much from Madam Janice later, but they'll get to something, but they will be supported and those cellium resources will be available. So Ed and Janice are going to talk a little bit about how remote learning is different this year, when I, like I said, when I get down from the soapbox, and they'll discuss that.
Thank you.
All right, so Nancy said, don't pay too much attention to these statistics, but everybody keeps asking for them, so here they are. So right now, as of, I don't know, about 2:00, 3:00 today, 562 unique fully remote learners that have selected that. Remember, this number could go up this week, okay? If it stays where it's at right now, that's about averaging somewhere between 1 to 3 in each class, okay? Could be more in some, could be less than the others, right? The percentages break down pretty close to our population between the schools, right? So don't look at that and think, oh, South, it's way more. Well, South has way more students, right? So it's pretty close to the student body breakdown there. 85% are choosing so far to do this, not because of a medical reason, but they just probably feel it's unsafe to come back to school. And then you see some of ours with our more extended needs there.
So I get to jump in now?
All right.
I've been waiting to answer this question for several weeks, actually. And Dr. Cupka raised it earlier, we've seen it in many emails. How are you going to make the kids wear the mask? Well, first of all, we don't operate by making kids do anything. Kids, we compel them perhaps, but one of the greatest sources of prides I have in my school is that our students accept responsibility for the safety of our school. And this is in line with that. Our most harsh penalties for breaking certain rules are those that involve compromising our building safety. I view this... I view this right along with that. And when kids understand that this is a matter of safety of everyone, they'll do it. And we have plans to explain to them why we're doing it. We, we're going to break it down, explain how to wear a mask. And my experience, which is vast when you get old, is if you explain expectations to students and why you're doing it, they're more apt to buy in. So I have zero concern about this moving forward. We may have a kid challenge us, but we don't have that happen very often for other safety things, because kids know what's going to happen when they do. And so we'll treat that the same way. The other thing is, I've talked to several students that have been here for camps and things over the last month, and you heard it from kids here, they want to come to school. If that means wear a mask, they'll wear a mask. So I have zero concern about mask issue.
Okay. Yep. So I think we're going to transition a little bit to talk about remote learning, because remote learning will occur both in the hybrid model and if we went to fully-remote, it's just part of it. So we wanted to explain some of the misconceptions that might be out there and how it's going to be different from the spring. But I want to start with just reiterating something that Dr. Thiele said. Mr. Schwartz and I fully support the hybrid model, and we believe that it is safe for our students and staff to come back. That has been our priority, and we have spent a lot of time preparing for that, and we are ready for students to go back. We did talk about the possibility of delaying. It is not, I think, in best interest for anybody. We need to get back and get at it. And so I hope that you'll see as we go through the rest of these slides that we have carefully planned the hybrid model, but we also have carefully planned the remote model. And so we are prepared to do whatever direction we need to go into based on the guidance from the DuPage County Health Department. So we'll start by just looking at some of the key differences between the spring and the fall of 2020. I think it's safe to say that many of us in the spring thought it was short-term. In fact, I remember as students were leaving the building on March 13th, they were almost, you know, filled with joy. They were like, huh, snow day, kind of thing, thinking that they were going to be out for a few days, a week or two maybe, and they would be back. And then it quickly settled into more than that. We know now that this year is going to be probably fluctuating back and forth between different models all year. So we have a different mindset. And when I say "we," I mean students and staff and parents, right? We have a different mindset, we're going to approach this differently, and I think it's, it's important to learn from the spring, but let's not keep going back to what happened in the spring and thinking that it's going to be exactly that same way, because in either model, students will be learning remotely. So in the spring, we, I'll use, I'm using two terms here that I want to make sure everybody understands. Asynchronously means that, that learning is not happening exactly at the same time. Synchronously means that the learning is occurring at the same time. So that's usually then a Google Meet, or a Zoom meeting, or something like that. So in the spring, a lot of the learning happened asynchronously by default. We had students and teachers who were faced with the schedule that they were not expecting. There were, there was fear, there were, you know, there were all kinds of things that happened. We didn't get a chance to train our staff, all kinds of things. So a lot of our learning occurred asynchronously. That will not be the case in the fall. Synchronously, synchronous learning will happen in every class period, whether we are in the hybrid model in the afternoon, or we are in the fully-remote schedule, synchronous learning will occur every class period. And we're going to go into more detail about that soon.
We hear a lot, probably the most famous statement spoken by our state leaders last year was, do no harm in term of students' grades. Students heard that and said, awesome, my grade can't go down. And that was interpreted by our state leaders to be exactly that. You don't have to be a genius to understand that's not good practice. And so that will not be the practice going forward. And I want to clarify, you're going to hear terms such as assessment and grades. Assessments are tools that our teachers use to gauge student learning and to work on student learning. The grades is a metric that they apply to it to give it some sort of scale of content mastery, skill development. So you have heard me, if you're a South High parent and a South High student, you've heard me say many times, don't worry about the grade. If you worry about learning, the grade will take care of itself. Grading and assessments will go back now to be in line with what they're covering in class, whether it be in-person, in-remote, and the corresponding activities. And so students and teachers will be working in tandem throughout on assessments and grading.
Hey, Ed, can I ask a quick question? What is the policy, or are we looking at changing or adapting the policy around students electing pass/fail if they feel that that type of a grading system would fit best for their academic goals for the year?
Yeah, we have not discussed that at that level.
Interesting comment.
Okay. Because I'm just thinking, some students may assess grades, this is a different environment, and it may alleviate some stress or anxiety from some students if they and their parents elect for certain classes to take it as a pass/fail basis instead of for a letter grade.
The other thing, Dan, it'll take a lot more conversation than just us at the administrative level, because that, that also has implications beyond high school.
Right.
That's a lot of explaining to colleges if that happens too much. If all of a sudden kids have five Ps on their transcript-
Yeah.
-that signals something else to colleges. So that, that's going to be a bigger conversation that will have to involve many beyond here.
I agree.
In similar fashion, the next slide about accountability. Last year, when we were winging it, we said, how do we account for kids being there? Okay, submit this Google form, right? We're running with it. Now, they need to be in class visually, for the teacher to see in class. We're very fortunate that we can provide our students with the tools needed, so their classroom will occur, as Janice said, synchronously. The teacher will be there at that time with students. Students need to be there, and that will be how we'll be accounting attendance.
Sorry, I'm going to ask another question. Just as a reference, what will the policy or how will teachers handle technology issues? I mean, I was on a phone call today, logging into a meeting, and I was 20 minutes late to a 30-minute meeting because of technology issues. Just love Comcast, by the way. But our students are going to have those same types of issues.
Yes. And we have, we have phone numbers, emails, et cetera, that they can call for IT issues. And if they can't, obviously, email's not going to work if you're having certain technology issues. That's why we provide a phone number for Help Desk too. And we'll have to work with our teachers. That's going to happen. And not just for the kids, for us as well, the adults as well, so.
Yep. Well, you know, it'll be communication and working through it. Yeah, we fully expect, I mean, look, at the last board meeting, I kept getting brownouts, right? I mean, the, the world of technology is perfect when it works perfectly.
I would say it's not unlike happens in the classroom. If a teacher plans a lesson, walks into the class, and nothing works, they have to change speed right away. And we have tools that hopefully with remind and they can text kids and technically issues, they shoot a text out to their all-students, I'm having technical issues, until I get it figured out, start reading chapter four in the Meissen manner, whatever, you know? So it's going to be different, but it's still going to be teachers adjusting on the fly to adapt to that.
In the spring, we decided after hearing some feedback from our students and parents that it was difficult to manage the assignments in all the different classes. So we ended up mandating that every teacher uses Google Classroom, which was good, except that not all of our teachers had used Google Classroom before, and they were not in a situation where they were able to get professional training, because they were honestly trying to survive and revise their curriculum and teach in a whole new way. So now we have an opportunity to teach our students, and our, both our students and our teachers, how to use Google Classroom effectively. So we will be maximizing that as a resource, and we have professional development already planned for that, for our teachers. And as we've already kind of said, timing of everything provided minimal preparation. But now we know what we don't know, and we are preparing. And our teachers already have been doing it. We have offered professional development for our teachers several times over the summer through our district and also with partnering with other districts, and we have had many teachers participate. I was just on a call, a session on Tuesday about cooperative learning, and there were 29 teachers on a, you know, Tuesday morning that were learning about cooperative learning on here. And there were many more that were in other rooms at that same time, talking about other sessions. There are people who are just learning on their own, like I did. I needed to figure out, how do I use Zoom breakout rooms? So I watched videos, and I figured it out. So the teachers have been doing that all summer, and then they will be involved in teacher training for institute days. And as you'll see, when you look, when we go through our, like, Monday schedule, you'll see why we built in professional development time. So we have time built in throughout the year to help our teachers understand what assessment tools to use, what technology to use, but also the more important things like, how do you build rapport and relationships with students through a computer? Because that's going to happen, even if we're in hybrid, a lot of the time's still going to be remote. So we have to figure that out. So it's not just about the technology and the tools, it's also about teacher presence in the, in the classroom. So those are all the things that we're working on. One of the reasons why we delayed the start of the school year to Monday instead of starting on the 14th was to give our teachers a remote learning planning day. We have built those days into our calendar in September and in October, because we wanted our teachers to be able to get in and figure out what's working and what's not working, and then have a chance to work with our colleagues and pivot and do whatever they might need to do. So those will be built in as we need them for the school year. And, of course, in the spring, we didn't get a chance to get a lot of feedback in a timely way, because honestly, as Dr. Thiele has said several times, we were flying the plane while we were still building it. And now we have a better opportunity to gather feedback, and I know that there's been some concerns about, well, how will we know if this is working? We will next turn to our system of how to gather feedback from students and parents on a regular basis. So are there questions on the remote learning in the hybrid model?
Board members, any questions on those? All right, moving on. All right, so, you know, there's a lot of discussion in the community about what happens when we move into a fully-remote model. There's a lot of the aspects that you just heard of remote learning that's going to happen in the hybrid model. Remember, hybrid still has remote inside of it. So what it will be is scaling this differently for a longer period of time, and you're going to see, you're going to schedule the changes as a result of that and some other experiences that happen. You heard tonight that there are limitations when we go fully-remote. The hands-on stuff gets tougher, all right? So you have to move to more simulations online, demonstrations that you record and show kids. But what will be different to some extent in the fully-remote model is that our teachers now, assuming that health conditions allow this, if we're in the fully-remote model, we have teachers as essential workers now, and they may be able to come back to school and probably will, and then have access to a chemistry lab to do a simulation or a demonstration of something there and to provide data for students to work through, or to walk them through something in a different hands-on CTE environment, or those kinds of things, where teachers will have access to their classrooms. In the spring, we sent everybody home and said, don't come back, right? So there's key resources our teachers have access to now in the fully-remote model that we didn't have in the spring. Okay, so we talked about this earlier, because the question came up from the board, but the idea is if we have to switch back and forth, we do it week at a time, all right? So if we start the week in hybrid, and on Wednesday or Thursday we have to switch and everybody can't come back to the building for in-person, we'll just keep all remote following the same hybrid schedule. So, you know, if it's a Tuesday, the B group will meet with their teacher in the morning, the A group will meet with their teacher in the afternoon, okay? And they'll finish that week out, and then we'll determine what we can return to the Okay, we talked about this earlier, but I think it bears worth repeating, okay? We do believe that remote learning can be effective, and that our teachers can do this effectively, and that our kids are going to be great inside of it, especially with all of the changes you've seen tonight. But it'll never, it never replaces being around people, physically being around people, okay? I don't know about the rest of you, but after the restrictions started to get lifted in June, I got together with a group of guys that I've coached with for years, coached baseball with for years, socially-distanced, outside, but I can't tell you how excited I was to see those five guys. I mean, it was like part of me was back that had been missing for a very long time. And our kids feel that right now. Part of them has been gone since March, and I really think it's important to get them back, and we're committed to doing what it takes to do that safely.
So we went to work to plan a fully-remote schedule, and we were sharing the list of the names because we got some volunteers. We had a good cross-reference between the buildings, the departments, we had some DGA executive board reps, some department chairs. So it was really a good group, and they came to work. We met for over, probably six hours over the course of four days, three different meetings, not to mention the work people did on their own in between those meetings. So when we say we can get things done, this is how it happens. And, and the schedule, the actual framework of the schedule you're going to see tonight originated in one of our English teachers' minds. That's where it started, and it evolved from there in our discussions. So I appreciate these people for giving their time and everything they did to make this schedule work. We began the process by just saying, okay, what are the things that we have to keep in mind? And Terry, that goes back to your question earlier, how can we move between, because it's very likely that's going to happen. And I won't read all those, but number one was, and this was based on the feedback from everyone in the spring, was, the time has to be synchronous. Classroom time has to be teachers with students, no exceptions. So that's where we started. And then we also had all of our special programming in mind and making sure that we provided breaks appropriately and didn't burn people's eyes out from staring at a screen for nine hours in a row. So there was, you can read them, but we went through a list of things, okay, here's where we're going to start. And then we just said, what could it look like? And we went from there. We, here's, I want to go back to some points that have already been made, and Hank alluded to it earlier. When you're designing schedules, when you're designing a hybrid, a blended hybrid schedule where you're having kids opportunities to be in-person, there are different factors that are weighed in. When people are going to be fully-remote, a lot of those restrictions are not necessary. And you're going to see some oddities in the schedule about even and odd periods. They are there for purposes. For example, in the hybrid, you know, you might have some big issues, like, what do you do with 500 or 600 kids who are scheduled to have lunch for the period? Where do you put them in an in-person setting? So that schedule was designed for one of, that's one thing that it was designed to accommodate. There might be other small things. Hank alluded to, what's that do to a part-timer schedule? They thought they were going to do this, but what's this schedule going to do? So there's big things, small things, and all those are considered when making a hybrid. Same thing is true when you're doing a fully-remote. Okay, if we're fully-remote and the kids are at home and not seeing their teachers in person, what's that going to look like staring at a screen for this amount of time? And so we went back and forth. So as you see some of these things, you're going to say, well, why did they do first and third period, not one and two? There's reasons for that, and we'll try to allude to it as we show this.
And that was actually one of the nice things about having a committee, because we had the committee represented some of those different special interest groups, and everybody understood that there was going to be no one schedule that was going to solve all of the issues, and so we had to look at what made the most sense. And so the committee ultimately came up with this schedule. So this is the Monday-only schedule. This schedule will be the same for hybrid or for remote. It's a little bit different than the Monday schedule that we had showed you with the hybrid model before. Some of the same-
Hold on, Janice. You went over that really quickly. This will be the same Monday schedule for hybrid and remote. So we're going to change the hybrid model, Monday schedule. So no matter what model we're in, you know, we're talking about being worried about consistency, Monday will be the same, no matter what. From here on out, as long as we're either doing hybrid or remote, Mondays are always the same. Sorry, I just, I wanted to hammer that point home.
Yes, yes. And let me explain, like, why we want this day to be like this.
Can you interject just for a second?
So some people...
Hold on a minute, just a second.
Yeah.
So this Monday schedule was not in the graph that we saw before. So anybody looking back at that...
Correct.
Needs to understand that this is, this is new.
Our graphics we send out tomorrow will be updated to reflect this. Yep.
I wanted to add additional emphasis. So, thank you.
Sure. So the philosophy of the day is the same. It's just the structure of the day. So what we built, when we built the Monday schedule is, is we needed time, as I mentioned earlier, for our teachers to learn how to teach in this new environment. So we wanted some professional learning time. We also know that we are going to have to change curriculum because it's not going to look the same. We're not going to be able to teach the same. We're not going to be able to assess the same. We want teachers to give an opportunity to collaborate so students' experience from one class to another is not vastly different. So we needed to build some common time because teachers are not all off at the same time, right? So those are built into our schedule, both for the hybrid and for the fully remote learning. We also wanted to meet with all of our students on Monday so that teachers could sort of set expectations for the week and give an overview of the week and make sure that, you know, there are any questions from the weekend or whatever there might be. So all periods would meet synchronously with their classes on Monday. So students would be going through, and that's why we put that teacher collaboration in the middle because going eight periods in a row is a lot for a student to be shifting back and forth on a computer. So we built that time in the middle so that the students could take a little bit of a break and then come back later.
One more reason. Splitting the day up more in mornings and afternoons, not ideal time, gives us a few more opportunities for like TCD and some of our special programming rather than having most of it in the afternoon. So just another added bonus that we just discover as we talk through some things.
Okay, and then our two...
Anthony, a good question.
So one of the questions that I saw come up again and again on emails that came in was the issue of minutes of time for class. So traditionally, a student would be in a class for longer than, I don't remember what the actual...
The time that they're actually in a classroom in a traditional school year is 240 minutes about that. Yeah.
Which is how many minutes per set, per...
It's 50 minutes per, it's 50-minute class period except for Mondays, which are shortened.
Okay, and now we're going down to 35?
On Monday.
On Monday, this is Monday only.
This is just Monday.
It's a shortened schedule because of the teachers.
Yeah, there are only 25-minute periods on Monday. You'll see Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday are a little longer.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So we'll go ahead and look at Tuesday through Friday?
Go to Tuesday through Friday?
Okay, so as Ed mentioned, we ended up going with a slightly different order of periods. So it doesn't follow the 1, 2, 3, 4. It actually goes with odds and evens. And we had a lot of conversation about that. But as we've talked about, there are different needs out there such as TCD, special programming, people are in internships, cooperative work training, part-timers, a whole bunch of reasons why this seemed to make sense. We couldn't do this in the hybrid model because we have traveling teachers and we have classes that are set up so that they have to be, you know, moving from one to another. Just different constraints. So we went with what works best for the remote learning schedule. You can see that our zero period is going to meet every day, Tuesday through Friday, and that's because they're not meeting on Monday. So they will not meet on Monday, but they actually end up having 15 more minutes of class time than all the other classes by meeting every day, Tuesday through Friday. So their teachers may end up not meeting every, you know, minute of those times, but they have that flexibility if they want to. So the student check-in resource period would be an opportunity that teachers know that all of their students are available and the students know that their teachers are available. So that might be a time for doing some re-teaching or something like that. In our current model, even if we were in school, I might be, if I'm teaching, I might be lunch fourth hour, but the student that I need to see has lunch fifth hour, right? And it's hard to make that connection. So by having this common time from 11 to 11:30, we can check in with some of those students that we need to check in with. Also during a regular school year, we offer some general programming like our Positively North or Mustang Way lessons. We provide push-ins from our counseling departments on Discover U and how to apply for college and, you know, choosing a career and all those kinds of things. We might be able then to use this time or the time on Monday that was teacher collaboration time to push out some of those things to our students. So that's a possibility that we're going to consider as well.
I would add one more, just as a former math feature. Many of you know we have an S program in our math where they meet a period and a half to catch them up to the level of their peers. If we did that consecutive periods in this model, those students would be with their math teacher for two whole hours. By doing odds and even, we get to give them math instruction every day, Tuesday through Friday with that teacher, albeit some of the days for half of a period. But we thought that was very powerful, having consistent math assistance throughout the week.
And so then the next slide is just an overview then of what that week looks like. And again, we'll put that out on the website along with our hybrid schedule, but that's just from the student perspective or the teacher perspective of what the week looks like. But I did want to drill down just a little bit more into what is happening during a remote learning class period? What structures will teachers be using? What supports are available to students? So as we said before, students and teachers will be meeting synchronously. So they will, students will log on to their computers, their cameras will be on, teachers will take attendance, they will see everybody, they will check in with everybody. And then just like they would if they were in a normal school year where we were in-person, they're going to vary their lessons based on what is needed, what the students need, what the curriculum needs. It might be that the whole class is with them the whole time. It might be that the whole class is with them for 15 or 20 minutes for some instruction and then students are broken up into small groups and they're in breakout rooms and the teacher's going back and forth between breakout rooms. It might be that the teacher feels a need to work with just a small group of students, either to enrich those students and give them something to challenge them a little bit more, or maybe to go back and remediate something that they didn't learn. It might be that the teacher wants the students to be working on something independently, but wants to be there in case they have questions. So if we were in school, sometimes students are working, right? But when they stumble on a question, a challenge, they can raise their hand and ask their teacher. What we saw in the spring is that they couldn't do that. And so then it was taking students much longer to complete work because they couldn't get the help they needed. Now the teacher would still be online. So the teacher would be online for the entire period, but maybe not all students would be online for the whole period. It just kind of depends on what is needed per class per day. Okay, so that would be the structure for the actual class. And then as has already been mentioned, students can get help from their teacher through office hours and also we will have virtual resource rooms. So maybe, you know, you're struggling with math or science and you want somebody else to kind of explain it to you because sometimes just having a different perspective helps, we'll have a virtual resource room as well. And we have a committee that's comprised of administrators and DGA working on that actually this week. They met last week and are continuing to work on that this week. And then we will continue to provide the other types of support that we would provide our students if they were in school as well. So counseling and student support services, as we heard from our students and some of our parents earlier today, very important in making sure that our students are healthy. If our students are not socially, emotionally stable and feeling good, they're not going to learn. And so we will be providing those supports. Of course, our library has been an incredible resource for us. And so our library staff will continue to work with our teachers and our students. Our school nurses will be very important in making sure that we're meeting the needs of, the health needs of our students and making sure that our school stays safe. I know there's been a lot of questions about college and, you know, getting students prepared. So college and career will continue their programming and be available to help students with scholarships and college visits. They'll be virtual, but we'll work through all of that. As mentioned earlier, activities and athletics will go based on what the guidance is and that some of it will be guidance from the board and some of that will be IHSA telling us what is allowed and what is not allowed. And then technology support is already mentioned. So, and then just finally with, I would end with, if we see that a student is not engaging, we will follow up. And that might include a home visit if someone is just not logging in. So what's nice is that because we're meeting with students daily, and that was one of our driving forces when we created both the hybrid model and the remote learning, is that we wanted to check in with every student every day because we don't want any student to get lost. So that was our focus for that.
All right, so tonight, when we bring this approval at the end, we're almost there, we are going to ask for the approval of the model that we discussed earlier, but while we're in the fully remote, so for that two-week period of time and afterwards, for as long as it's healthy to do any of these, we are recommending that the board approves us allowing driver's education behind the wheel. We have this going on right now this summer following very strict safety protocols, that if we're able to develop and continue that going, that we would be allowed to keep that program moving forward even if we were fully remote moving forward, as long as the Health Department, IDPH says we can do it. The TCD programming would continue, that we would continue working with TCD and whatever options that they're offering and whether that's we're virtual or whether we're remote or in-person, that students could still engage in the curriculum at TCD, Technology Center of DuPage. That programs requiring off-campus activities like the Intro to Teaching Program, the Work Programs, internship, as long as we can make sure that wherever students are going, that there's going to be a similar safety and health protocols and that it's safe for students to go there, that we would allow students to go to those off-campus activities and have those experiences as part of their curriculum. And it's cut off there. Recommend allowing participation if the programs have the same health and safety protocols. That's the key piece that's missing off of that sentence. Boy, four hours on this last night and we missed the end of a sentence. In-person extracurricular participation, we are recommending that regardless of whether we are in-person or remote, regardless as whether a family chooses hybrid or fully remote, that as long as IHSA guidelines are allowing for athletics to continue, students could select to participate in those after-school activities. That it'd be up to their families and the students to determine if they're comfortable participating in those. I don't know how many people have seen this, but IHSA has restructured the whole year into four seasons and has restructured when the sports actually occur. The ones that would occur here in the fall, starting the school year, would be boys and girls golf, boys and girls cross-country, girls tennis, and girls swimming. So we're recommending allowing our athletic directors to work with the conference and with IHSA and determine the protocols and follow those things to make sure that we can do those things safely and offer those fall sports. For activities, things like band and choir and any of the other things that we offer, there are safety plans put together for those, as you heard tonight. Band programs are back working, color guard is working. We have a whole bunch of activities that are back working under strict safety guidelines, that we would allow those to continue even in a fully remote model as long as it's safe to do so and as long as it's approved by the principals. So they are vetting each of those safety plans and procedures. It involves parents signing off and agreeing that they're going to follow those procedures and everything else.
So, I'm sorry.
Yes.
So if we, if the Board of Health said we need to go fully remote, everybody, we would still maintain these activities?
No.
Okay.
For the, for the couple of weeks that we're fully remote...
I'm sorry.
Because of staffing.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it's because of health that we have to go fully remote, then this all gets changed.
Okay.
Yeah. But for those first two, remember, we're in the week for the hybrid, the two weeks we're fully remote, that these things would continue as if we were in school running the hybrid model. We wouldn't pause these things because we're not out because of health at this point. We're out because of staffing. So, and you're going to hear in a little bit, we're not recommending a larger remote for most during those two to three, or two to three weeks or however long we're there until we get staffed and can hopefully come back. But if we end up in a larger remote learning possible, time period, we'll talk about what some of the ideas and challenges are around that in a second, as Mike, you asked for us to address tonight.
Are we going to have, move into closed session at any point tonight?
There's no plan to, no.
No, okay.
But she, she wants to call it before we go to vote.
Yeah, before we vote, I was wondering...
She's asking for it.
Yeah.
That you would like a closed session?
Yeah, if we could.
For what purpose? We have to meet a very specific guideline to go into closed.
For a specific purpose, okay. No, I guess I just...
But do you have a point of clarification before we make the vote?
I guess I, I kind of was surprised about the remote for most, that we're not going to be discussing that at all.
We are. We're discussing remote for most next.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Yep, that's coming next.
Okay, I thought it wasn't going to be discussed.
No, we're just not recommending that during those two weeks, that we, other than what you see up above, that during the second and third week of school, this would be the only extension of bringing students back that we're asking the board to authorize. We're not investigating anything more than that for that two to three week, you know, that period, two-week period of time or whatever it turns out to be. Other things beyond that that the board asked us to investigate, which we're going to share with you in a second, we're not recommending anything beyond this at that beginning start period of the school year.
Okay.
Okay, so everybody would be fully remote in Weeks Two and Three, except for these exceptions that you see on the board right now. Possibly driver's education, definitely TCD, perhaps programs requiring off-campus activities, and definitely extracurricular activities would continue during that Week Two and Week Three. We're not recommending anything beyond that during that week period of time, except for what's missing up here that I left off there is T-99, the Transition Center, would run the schedule that they've been talking about, which is a daily A-B schedule. They're a school within the school, they're their own program. We, we don't have, we have some staffing concerns there, but not enough that we feel like we can't run that program successfully straight through this, as long as it's healthy to have kids at school. So that's, it's on the final recommendation slide, but I left it off here. So for, this is really what we're talking about. It should say, in a fully remote learning model for Weeks Two, Three, or however long that beginning part of the school year is. Okay? Okay, so questions, especially for Ed and Janice? Anything that's come to your mind yet on the remote learning model?
Excellent work. I mean, in warp speed, to use the verbiage of the day, just excellent work. And I think, I think it would be fair to say that the board's wrestling with all of this, which everybody is getting to witness in real time. You know, we normally don't share everybody, with everybody what we're thinking at any point along the way. And but we've been doing, you know, our administration's been doing that and being transparent and sharing. And we as a board have been doing that as well. So, but knowing that the, knowing that the board was pretty much split over this, I think it caused you to spend, you know, shift gears really quick, spend a little bit more time working on this in the last week. And just really, really appreciate that.
Well, yes and no, Mike. Remember, the hybrid model has a lot of in it that's remote. So the things at the beginning that were different from last spring to this was always intended to come to this board meeting tonight, right?
Okay.
Because it was, take to the board and approve this structure, like the over big skeleton was July 20th, and then we were going to fill in the details tonight on August 3rd, right? In between there, we had a special board meeting scheduled to talk more about remote. And what came out of that was really the work on the schedule in a fully remote model. The instructional pieces, we had talked about all summer, you know, as to what would be different in remote, because part of hybrid is remote learning. It was going to have to be different, right? So those pieces, we had roughed out the great majority of that before. We just were planning on, this is when we would share that with the board and the public, right? What the board accelerated last week for us was, what does the day look like in a fully remote learning model? Which, when we talked on the 20th, the plan was get hybrid approved on the 20th, the skeleton, come back tonight, fill in the blanks, color inside the lines, a little bit on what the hybrid model and instruction looks like, and then come back on the 17th with this. What the board did was reprioritize our working groups last week. groups last week. So Ed and Janice and the team chaired this group with the teachers you saw there, to really put together this schedule. A lot of what they presented on what remote learning looks like, we had already been working on all summer, right?
Yeah, I didn't mean to mischaracterize. The Monday, the Monday change, though, and how that has impacted, I mean, that's, I'm, I'm just so glad that we've done this. And it just, this is all in real time.
No, it's good work.
It's outstanding. I don't know how-
Well, and the result of it, I think our Mondays are way better, as a result of doing that work. So, you know, it-
So, thank you, thank you to the entire team, everybody on that list. Nobody's sleeping. I know that. So, thank you.
What's sleep?
Yeah, got it. Well, I'm reading emails in my sleep, so.
All right, so exploring remote for most. For those of you sitting in uncomfortable chairs like us, not much, not much left here.
Quick question, Hank, just a point of clarification for remote for most, because my interpretation was that you're showing this because it came up in the meeting last time?
Correct.
It didn't show up on option four, but you're not recommending this, but you're just sharing this because this was something that was talked through.
Correct. So as part of the board meeting last week, Mike and I believe a couple of board members wanted us to explore what this idea of, and we don't love this term, but remote for most would look like, the idea of nearly everybody's working every day in a fully remote model, but select students are coming back in for different experiences, very small groups, if it was safe to do so, to bring back, you know, smaller groups of students. Okay, so we spent some time this week as well exploring this with our teams.
So, I am hoping Mr. Davenport has coined the phrase and got it trademarked or copyrighted, because of remote for most, we did spend a lot of time-
Except he just said he doesn't really care for it, so.
I don't, I'm sorry.
You could use it somewhere else, maybe.
You could, you could still copyright it, I just don't like it.
Yeah, I don't know how much I like it anymore.
Trust with you.
Some people interpret it the wrong way, and-
So, so to review, the concept, though, was that most, everybody is fully remote on a daily basis. You're bringing in specific groups of students based on needs and small groups. You're following the safety guidelines. These programs are not ready to go today, right? Except for the ones that we just talked about, TCD, T-99, athletics are getting there, right? We have, we have a few that we could keep running right as the school year started.
Yeah.
But what we're talking about now is we're in a fully long extended remote, most likely the state or some other guideline is coming in and saying, you're doing remote for a long time, right? So, but you could still bring in, they might say this, under certain conditions, you could bring in small groups of kids, in groups of 10, 25, 50, whatever that might be, right? So that's kind of what we kicked around and explored a little bit. And we're going to share some of those ideas around those and some of the challenges. And Ed and Janice are going to talk through these here.
And we are not afraid to look at this, because as Janice said, our goal is, if we can get kids in the building, we think we can have more impact on them. So if, if this is a way we can do it and do it safely, we're all in favor to look at it. So we're going to talk about a few of the groups that were mentioned. First, freshmen. What if we just bring freshmen in? As we proposed in that opening day schedule, that's kind of an orientation, where we'll split the freshmen and begin their orientation week in person with their teachers. That type of thing makes sense and is relatively easily done dividing up a schedule. If we were going to be doing that at more of a prolonged basis, that presents all types of challenges, because as you know, many of our classes are mixed grade level. So if you just bring freshmen in and their teachers are working with them, who's working with the rest of the class? Or vice versa, really? And so, also brings up, and you'll hear this each time, inequities with teaching staff. How do we pull that off? So, when, when we're saying this, this is not that we're afraid to look at these, but these are going to take a lot more investigation than we're going to be able to solve in the short term. So, just want to point out, we're fine looking at remote for most, we just wanted to share some of the challenges.
Can I just add one thing? Some of our classes are mixed and some of them are grade-specific. So by bringing in a whole freshman class, we would have to put them on an A-B schedule, because we could not accommodate bringing in a whole class in.
Social distance.
So, that's another challenge.
We also talked about our English learners. Predominantly, more of them are at South and North, but our EL students are all at different levels, and, and their programs are based on their level of the language development. As they get to the higher levels, they are more and more into regular classes. So we'll, we'd have to set up a structure of support to not be taking them out of their academic class, to provide them support for the academic class they're missing. So there, there's some coordination that would need to occur based on the level of the students. So again, not necessarily a bad thing, but something that will take much more coordination than just, let's bring them in.
Okay, then, we had our at-risk students, and one of the first challenges is defining, what do we mean by at-risk? Are we talking about the students who didn't succeed in the spring? Even that is challenging. As we heard from one of the parents, a lot of students got grades higher than probably what they deserved. So just looking at grades is not going to identify which students didn't necessarily succeed with, with the remote learning. So are we talking about, you know, students who don't have the, the resources at home? Are we talking about students who, you know, struggle with learning independently? How do we define at-risk? If we do bring that group of students in, I think it's important to note that they would not be with their own teachers, because their teachers would be teaching the rest of the class. And so if we put them in the class with the rest of the class, the teachers would have maybe two or three or four students sitting in front of them, and everybody else would be remote. That's a very difficult learning environment to manage. How are you making, taking advantage of the fact that you have all these students in front of you, when you also have to teach all of those students who are online? So that would be really challenging. They would be with a support staff member, which is also an advantage, though, right, that they could have somebody there to help them, make sure that they're logging in, if they have questions, directing them to a resource room. Just so you know, we have that idea already built into our hybrid model, and actually have space set aside in our building, that our students who are not struggling in that independent learning, in that time when they're supposed to be remote, that we can bring them into school and put them in a room. So that, that could happen in either model. We talked a lot about motivation, and you heard about it if you listened to the board meeting last week from one of our teachers. If, if some stu-, most students are staying home, what is the motivation to come? It's going to, you're going to have to get up early, or you're going to get home later, right? There's a lot of issues there. Many of our at-risk students are not going to be motivated to come. And then we're very concerned about labeling. If people know you're going to school, why are you going to school? Is it because you have an IEP? Is it because you have anxiety? Is it because your grades aren't good enough? It would really kind of separate who we have in the building. And that leads us then to students with IEPs. And again, you know, this is one of those things where the guidance from ISB says, well, yeah, try to bring those students in. Well, who are we talking about? Because we have students with IEPs who range from needing very little support at school to having multi-needs. And we already have a system in place for our T-99, as Dr. Thiele mentioned, that will be coming in regularly anyway. We're looking at our multi-needs student, our students with multi-needs, to see if they need to, you know, come in more regularly. So we have placed plans already for those students. For the other students, it would be challenging to figure out exactly who needs to come in and how those staff members will be working with them. So in a co-taught class, are you only bringing in the students, you know, with, with the IEP? That seems awkward. So again, motivation for coming to school and labeling would be an issue here as well. And so as we looked at overall the challenges of, of a remote for the most, and, and quite honestly, we've talked about this since we got the guidance from ISB. And we said, like, a lot of this sounds good, but realistically, is, are we able to do this? So this is not the first time we've talked about this, but we've spent more time putting the slides together based on what the board has asked us to do. But it really comes down to equity and fairness. And we know that equity does not mean equal, and there are going to be certain programs that are going to look different, and that's okay. But we just want to make sure that we have good explanations for that, because we will be requiring different working conditions for our staff. And that doesn't mean that we can't do that, but it has to be for really good reasons, and we have to have that very well thought out. We also want to make sure, as we mentioned before, about the labeling is really important, and we have to consider transportation and how we're getting students to and from school. And then finally, we just wanted to point out that there seemed to be a misconception from some of the people who were emailing, that the SAT has not been, has been waived. And that is not true. That is still a graduation requirement in the state of Illinois, and it is mandated that we give it. And so one of our challenges will be if we're, whenever that date is, because they gave us one date, but now they're talking about another date. So we would have to look at our schedule of how are we getting students in to get that test, when we also have other students doing this remote learning. It's not an insurmountable challenge, but it's just something else to consider.
So, any questions related to that, the idea of remote for most? Really, the key takeaway from it is, we've been kicking around all summer. Some of it is stuff we're actually doing, like T-99, right, that it ended up with. Some of it might be other programs that do develop over time. However, doing it on a wide scale, really, there's some huge challenges, some huge equity and fairness issues. Any of these are, are not going to show up in a couple of weeks, right? This is stuff that we're going to have to spend a lot of time on, we're going to have to work through, we're going to have to work through the intricacies, how we protect students' privacy, and it, all of those kinds of things. That is not, something beyond the things that we talked about earlier, for those couple of weeks to start the school year, none of these others are we recommending at this, this time.
So, I'll just say that if we're in a fully remote model, some of these challenges are going to have to be met somehow. And my hope would be that, for instance, if the, if the state, powers that be, tell us that we have to be in a remote model, I mean, we're going to be, we're going to have to figure out how to address some of these challenges. And, and my hope would be that the, the state, if we're told we have to do this, or if we decide to do this, that, that we can come up with ways to meet these challenges. You know, for, mandated SAT, you know, I mean, somebody's going to have to tell us how to do that. If, if, if we're being told we have to be in remote, you know, I mean, we, we got to, we're going to have to figure out how to do that.
All I can, all I can go on, Mike, is the track record of us this summer, and I think that the administrative team and the teachers have shown that we can pull off just about anything that, that we need to do. So it's, it's not a matter of can we, it's, you know, having enough time to do it right, and to make sure that, that it, it makes sense to do it. But if it's, if we get to the point where we think it's the right thing for kids and it's worth doing, or it's mandated by the state of Illinois, we'll figure it out, and we'll make it work.
I have full confidence.
I have a general question.
Yes.
Not about remote for most, just in general. What is our liability as a school?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great one, it's come into multiple locations.
Share that with everybody.
Yeah, so, schools are really protected by something called the TORT Immunity Act. And what that really lays out is that schools can, are only liable for any damages if there's been a willful and wanton disregard for the rules. So by putting together a plan here that follows the IDPH guidelines, follows the ISB guidelines, that we're listening to the Health Department and doing what they tell us to do, that really lowers the risk of our liability. Anybody can sue anybody for anything, right? But the likelihood that we would be liable for any damages by following these plans, our attorneys say that, that we are very well protected in the plan that we have built here.
Did you say that was the Work Community Act?
TORT.
TORT. T-O-R-T, TORT Immunity Act.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked the question, Nancy, because I can tell you that that's never entered into my thinking, or I think anybody else's thinking, as we've been going through this. You know-
We've gotten that.
You know, we're, you know, we, we do things the right way, that's why we don't have to worry about these things.
Right.
And, and this is another example of that.
I'm not an attorney, and I don't, you know, I, but I was just, because I was curious. So I was reading up on this, this week, and different groups were opining that, to your point, as long as you had put the processes in place, where the, where the risk lie, or the, is if, like, for instance, if you don't have close enough supervision. So that, if people don't follow social distancing, or if people take off their masks and somebody becomes infected, then you very well might be liable, so.
Right, so things that we've done like to address that, to speak to the, like, the monitoring of the things. We've already changed all of our administrative meetings to put them all in the afternoons, for as long as we're in the hybrid model, so that all administrators across the district are free in the morning of meetings to be able to be in the hallways supervising students, right? So there's a lot of actions that we've taken to ensure that these things are in place. If you go through our hybrid plan and how closely it aligns with all of those, that guidance, and the fact that we have ways to carry it out, is what protects us from liability down the road. And we have been in very close conversation with the district attorneys as we have built these plans, and they've been very supportive of our work in, in the, in the hybrid model.
Thank you. Any other questions?
All right, so the moment you've been waiting for is, what the administration is recommending for action tonight is the following. So when we get to agenda item, after the consent agenda, we get to recommendation for Action 6A. It says, direct the superintendent to begin the 2021 school year as directed by the Board of Education under Agenda Item 4A, which is where we are now. The administration's recommendation, when we get there to 6A, would be to vote in favor of what you see here on the screen. So it would be to open the school year, hybrid learning Week One is outlined earlier tonight. Families can choose to be remote this week. We'll provide details on material, pick up students, we'll be supported whether the hybrid model or the remote model, and we'll have the pickup of all PPE in advance of students returning. During Weeks Two and Three, the experience will be to the improved remote learning model that you heard about tonight, and we'll be preparing our staff and lining up staff to return onto the hybrid model. We're asking that you accept all administration recommendations for remote learning during that time, which includes the possibility of having driver's education behind the wheel, students attending TCD, programs requiring off-campus activities, of course, following all the safety guidelines, following the IHSA guidelines for athletics, allowing activities to continue mostly remote but in person when approved by the principal, and for Transition 99 to continue under that modified A-B daily schedule that we've talked about. Families would not have to commit to remote, to remote, fully remote learning in the hybrid model until this Friday, August 7th. And then hybrid learning and intention to return Week Four, if IDPH health guidelines and metrics are being met and staffing is complete. We would not return in Week Four unless the Health Department told us that it was safe to do so. If it's unsafe, we'll stay in remote at that point. If it's safe, we return to the hybrid model and we stay there for as long as we possibly can, based on safety to do so, based on those metrics, and consultation with the Health Department.
And, Dr. Thiele, you will be reporting the, you know, the metrics, or what, what is, okay, just want to be sure.
Yeah, as soon as we hear what those are this week, we'll communicate those to the, I'm sure that there'll be a lot of press on it as well. But as soon as we get those guidelines, we'll update the board and the community.
Okay, yeah, okay.
And I'm just saying, too, as we go throughout this process, basically.
Yeah, yeah, we'll keep people up to date. You know, if the numbers are starting to, numbers have, have shown you a trend line of where they're going, but they could have a sudden spike, and then, you know, we suddenly have to change overnight. We all have to realize that it's all unknown, right? We could be able to give people indication that, oh, the numbers are starting to go the wrong direction, be ready to switch. Or it could be nine o'clock at night, you get an email and a phone call from us that say, don't come to school tomorrow, we're now fully remote, but tomorrow we're following X schedule, right? It could be just like that for the course of the year. If we have to suspend the hybrid model, we would transition into the remote learning format and schedule in the format we've talked about tonight. Like, we'd finish a week out with that hybrid schedule, but fully remote, and then figure out where we go from there. So please, families and students, read your emails from your administrators. It's going to be important that you, you're following along with what's going on. So this is the recommendation for action that we have for the board tonight, when we get to 6A. And I will leave that up on the screen, so when we get there, you know what it is that the motion is.
Nancy, would it be possible to adjust our agenda, to complete our work on this item, and have action on it before we get to the next things coming up, so that these good people don't have to stay for the- have to stay for the rest of our work if they don't?
They don't want to talk about the amended school calendar?
I, I think, they may, they're certainly welcome to stay, right? But it's 20 to 10.
I think we can adjust the schedule, but I would like to point out one thing that's on the Consent Agenda, and I have one question about this, but I just, so I don't forget. One of the things on the Consent Agenda is acceptance of the contribution from the Bonfield Express, who contributed $5,000 to North and $5,000 to South, and we are always appreciative of their contribution.
Yes, they've done this.
How much?
They've done this on a yearly basis for years. They're wonderful supporters of our school district.
We would be remiss if we didn't call them.
Well, we have all these people here.
If we can't jump ahead, can we maybe ask for just a brief as possible report on some of these other topics, then?
We can jump ahead, the board president can choose to.
I do, I do have one other question, though, about this, before I vote on this. Because I got to tell you, I wrestle with this.
So have we.
I know, I know. In different ways, we've wrestled with this.
Speak in your microphone.
Oh, sorry. You know what, I moved it away because I thought there was, like, reverb and, I wrestle with this, just because, you know, frankly, I don't, I don't, I think it'll be called before we even begin, to be honest, because the numbers are creeping up, regardless of what people may think, that they're creeping up, from everything I've read. Can you explain again, you may have covered this, and I'm sorry. So, we've talked about parent choice, we've talked about student choice, we've talked about teachers and support staff who want to go remote for medical reasons, or for, you know, childcare reasons, or, you know, like you said, you know, "Spot me for this week, and then I'm back."
Mm-hmm.
If we have a, if we, if only my department of public health, or DuPage County Public Health comes forward and says, "This is the metric."
Yeah.
Then I am happy.
Mm-hmm.
If they don't, we're, I then am left in a quandary, as to at what point are we safe, and at what point are we not safe? If a staff member wants to take their first week and just be remote, and they don't have a medical condition, is that something we would allow, or no?
No. No, staff are employees, and they are essential employees, and if they don't have a, one of those documented legitimate medical reasons, or a childcare reason that fits under the guidelines that were provided under these various acts, then they have a choice to make. Either they come back to work, or we'll allow them to take a leave of, an unpaid leave of absence.
Okay.
And I know that might sound like the heartless boss, but we do have a company to run, you know? And we will be very careful with our staff and very caring, and we're doing everything we can to address all of the safety concerns. Part of this is, staff have got to come back and see a work to feel comfortable here, and students do, too, all of us. Look, I don't know how many of you had that first day back to work, where you had to get in your car and drive to work and kind of break that seal of being locked in your house? It's an uncomfortable day, it's scary, it, you don't know how to feel, you don't know what to do, you don't know what, we have to get past that, if we're ever going to be open.
Mm-hmm.
And that first week is the opportunity for that. And if we do something horrible in that first week, or it needs to be, I don't think we'll do anything horrible, but if there's things that need to improve, we'll know it at the end of that week. We'll have a couple of weeks in remote, we'll make those adjustments, and we'll make sure everybody feels even more comfortable when they come back.
In my opinion, this three-week period is going to tell us a lot. So, I think it's the best that we could do at this point. It gives everybody, I think, a little comfort, because in three weeks, we're going to know a lot more about where these numbers are going to be than we do today. So, I mean, that's just my opinion on it. We got hybrid start with two days of schooling, basically.
For each student, yeah.
For each student.
One day for freshmen, two days for everybody else.
Right. And then we have the two weeks of remote, which we're going to learn a lot, I believe, in those two weeks. And our administration is dedicated to watching the numbers, as I know our community is, too, so that we get the best possible answers that we can.
Yeah, I would love that the IDPH and that the state leadership, not, I'm not criticizing, look, they've been working ungodly hours, too. But I wish I had that to offer the board tonight, right? I just don't.
It made life much easier.
Yeah, that would have, it made the decision for everybody much easier. But we also need a direction, and we need to get to work, and people need to know what to expect. You know, I'm sure we will revisit this every board meeting for the foreseeable future. So, you know, and if those IDPH numbers come out and board members are uncomfortable, we could always call a special board meeting and rediscuss it.
Okay. Are there any other questions, or are we ready to vote?
I have a, I have a brief statement I'd like to read. So, I have a student who is a senior at DGS this year. So, please understand that I empathize with all of your concerns and fears and opinions as these affect my family, too. I'd like to thank my fellow board members and all of you for your comments. Many of you have shared heartfelt concerns, terrific insights, and thought-provoking opinions. I have read most every email and comment, and regret that my day job and my family responsibilities have not allowed me the time to personally reply to all of you. I have replied to a few, but I truly, truly appreciate you sharing. After conversations with our staff and our awesome superintendent here, I believe that the hybrid plan can address several of my previous concerns. Provide mental health support for both students and teachers struggling with fear and anxiety. Ensure equity for students who select remote learning only. Provide an option for parents to opt out after tonight's decision, not just before. Provide remote learning monitoring and accountability, since the hybrid plan is, after all, a mostly remote plan. Remote learning must be robust, and I'm convinced that we can do it well and better than most. Absent any new facts or points of view yet to be expressed this evening, I will be voting to support the hybrid plan. My support for the hybrid plan will remain until Governor Pritzker, Illinois Superintendent of Education Ayala, the Illinois State Board of Education, and/or the State or County Department of Public Health tells me otherwise. To be clear, the decision we will make tonight should have been a decision that they make.
Exactly.
I, as a school board member, should not, should not be making decisions that potentially impact the health and safety of my entire community. The governor saw fit to close our schools. He and others I mentioned should be telling us exactly, explicitly, when and how to open them back up. It's not enough to tell us to prioritize in-person experience, although this is the primary reason I am now supporting the hybrid plan. Our leaders have failed us. I hope you all share your comments and concerns with them with the same passion that you've shared with us. They created this mess. I had some other things I wanted to say, too, but this meeting is going on too long. Thank you all.
Well said, Michael, well said.
Well said. Well said.
Anybody? Do we have a motion for the Board of Education to direct the superintendent to begin the 2020-2021 school year as decided by the Board of Education under Agenda Item 4A?
So moved.
Michael?
Second.
I'm sorry, Dan? Dan?
Dan? Thank you. Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Joanna Wazkos-Drexler.
Aye.
Sherrell Fuller.
Aye.
Nancy Cupka.
I would really like to abstain. I will tell you, I will vote aye, but I will be very clear to say that I personally, as I have for my junior in college, would go with remote, because I do think this is well thought out, I think all the Ts have been crossed and all the Is have been dotted. But to Mike's point, we are put in a position that we never should have been put into. So, with that, the hybrid?
The 2021 plan is presented.
Hybrid, uh, that thing, that thing. Okay.
With caveats, though.
The next, the next item.
Before we go into the next item, though, can we take a five-minute break?
Well, are we going to do the, are we going to go ahead with the reopening plan approval resolution?
All right, let's work it to that later.
Okay.
Yeah. I'd love for a five-minute break. I would really like to.
Five minutes.
All right. So, we will come back at 9:55, 9:55.
Okay.
Good job, Dr. Thiele.
Thank you. You know I love you. Well done.
See you, man.
Thanks for coming and speaking.
Thank you very much. I have a paralympian, and I know you're so encouraging, regardless of how it turns out.
Thank you.
That's who we're here for. You guys do great, you guys make us look good.
Yeah, yeah. I love it.
I'll keep it clean for you.
I'll do anything you want me to do. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Nancy. Thank you so much for speaking. You guys were great. Thank you.
I kind of get that, though, because it is a lot. It is, it is a lot. I said, "I wish I had thought."
You know, I get asked sometimes, Hank, what my favorite projects were or are, and I tell them, and I think I've told you this before in our Master Facility Plan work, I've been, I really can never point to a project. I think back to the experiences I've had, and I've had the opportunity to work with awesome people, office, clients, and this has been one of those times.
I wish we weren't, I agree with what you said, we shouldn't be here.
I think from the first day when I heard that, I'd go, "Well, that's it, push it off, push it off."
There's no way that individual, individual superintendents are the fall guys for all of this right now.
Yeah, that's right.
Because no matter what happens now, whether we're right or wrong.
They're clear.
No, the fingers are all going to point back at us.
That's what I'm saying. They're clear. That's what I'm saying, is that the people above us are clear. They don't have to make the political questions. Yeah, yeah. It's just, I mean, this just starts at the top and goes all the way down.
Not my account, sure.
Well, that's fine, because I said what I said and I meant what I said.
I will say this, you know I have him.
I know.
You know I have him. Those two people down there, and I don't mean Rick, Pavanato.
And Dennis.
You mean Dennis?
We lost him. Good job.
Ten, two, three, four, five, six, seven, we're all here.
We're all here.
I guess we're not that interesting, we lost everybody.
I told you.
Should have made them stick around for the end.
Is it 9:55?
Yeah, 9:53. You have two minutes.
Get on, we're going to go. We're going to re-turn. We're going to re-turn, guys.
Two minutes.
Be easy.
You're probably live, so.
We're still broadcasting.
Oh, perfect. Okay.
So, nobody heard me swear?
But you're going to resume, correct?
Correct. You're filling a leave.
Resume YouTube. He just said it's just not going out at the moment live. They can still see us.
Absolutely.
Yeah, she's almost all been conditioned to expect the worst.
Whenever we hire somebody for a leave, we make it very clear to them, yeah.
Okay, we got one minute.
Well, that's what I was saying, that's why, to me, it's just.
Right, it's longer term, they should take that, yeah.
Amazing.
Right, yeah.
It's going to really.
And we have leave, we have people we hire for leaves every year.
Okay, 11 or 12.
Whether it be a maternity leave, or a long-term leave, or sabbatical, we always tell them upfront, like, you're replacing somebody, and if they come back, you know, there's a chance you can lose your job. Yeah, I don't think we will. What we're, what I think we're going to see more of is teachers teaching six classes.
In the definition of the plan.
Okay.
All right, two minutes is up. Your five minutes is up. Sherrell, you got your two minutes.
Sherrell, your time's up.
Five minutes is up.
Okay, what was I getting?
Okay. Okay. You're done under the 2020-2021 Student Prayer and Handbook.
All right, so, this is in Board Docs, and it's come a couple of times to the board, it's been shared with them, with you multiple times. The only revision since last week is we matched some of the mask guidelines in there to match CDC language a little bit more, the idea of multi-layered masks, and that they would follow those guidelines. Other than that, it's the same, same changes that we need to put in to execute and, you know, carry out the discipline portion of following the plan that was just approved.
Will that be highlighted, will that be highlighted to the students that, you know?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah, we're going, one of the things that I've talked about that we'll prepare in their virtual learning in that first week will be this, yeah.
So, not only how to wear a mask, but what kind of masks are really?
Yep, all of that will be built into the return to school programming.
Excellent.
Talk about the reopen, the resolution now, right?
Uh, no.
No, the Parent Handbook.
That was the Parent Handbook.
For B.
The handbook.
Oh, okay.
Uh, we can't talk about the resolution, because it was in the last, it was in the last, but let's just talk about it when we get to the action item. We'll do discussion there before we vote.
Okay, carry on the order you're in. I just want to be sure I'm hearing correctly.
You are, well, yeah, so, it's the Student Handbook Anonymity, so, we're recommending that the board approve that tonight, and then that essentially becomes board policy and part of the discipline handbook. Then, any questions on that one, other than?
No.
No.
Okay. The next one is amended school calendar. One of the things that the state did over the summer was add Election Day as a school holiday, but didn't tell us how to make up that day in the school year. So, what we're actually doing is putting one of the five remote learning planning days on October 12th, which is a non-attendance day.
Got it.
So, teachers will need to work on that day on preparing stuff for their teaching and learning, that's one of their days for that day, in exchange for November 3rd. So, that makes it so we don't have to adjust our school calendar in any way for families, only our teachers. So, and in discussion with most teachers are fully in support of that. I haven't met one that has said it's a bad idea yet, so. This has gone through a lot of different groups as we've gotten to this point. So, recommendation of approving that calendar, it doesn't change anything for families except they now get November 3rd off.
Okay.
Very good.
Anything on facility, or can we?
Yeah, Master Facility Plan progress, you can see in here, there's a lot of work going on. We're getting, a couple of you got to walk past the new addition over at South on the way in.
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
Fabulous.
That's amazing, right?
Oh, my gosh.
So, you can see in there, Phase B work is finishing up at North this week, so that's the gymnasium wood floor, the Prince Street Plaza pavers, the cafeteria and culinary equipment, and the library mill work. Work is still progressing on that southeast addition, remember, that's that end of September, October 1 turnover, that's what we're still looking at, but we'll be fine with classes up until that point. At South, all Phase B, which is that addition, is finishing up this week. And Phase C, if you're able to look out into the courtyard, you can see a lot of steel going up for that new commons, and if you go outside, it's really hard to miss the auditorium structure being put up and rising up above South High. LinkedIn here for the board and for the public is the periodic progress report from Whiting Company, which includes a lot of great pictures of the work going on, 360-degree camera view.
ask them if they, you know, if you'd like to call a special board meeting or, or something to discuss it. If it's a minor change, then we're just gonna do it, and I'm gonna inform you, like, hey, here's, here's this thing that we had to bypass in order to do something, right?
Any substantive change to the plan shall be made in consultation with the President of the Board and then properly reported to the Board, which may affirm, modify, or disapprove of the changes, so.
Right. So if it's, if it's pretty minor, I'm gonna talk to Nancy about it, and then we're, we're gonna move forward and I'll inform the Board. If it's something super-major or a change in the style of the plan, we're gonna have to come back as a Board and discuss that.
All right, so like even Nancy would be your sounding board if it's something pretty minor.
As she always is.
Isn't it wonderful?
But let's just, we're putting it on record, yep, so, okay, yep.
Yeah, this is just, it's, you know, this is one of those questions earlier about liability. We don't want to end up in a spot where, as, as the administration is trying to execute this plan, that we end up in a nitpicky thing of, well, it says exactly in Board policy you're supposed to do XYZ, but you did ZYX, now I'm gonna sue the Board and the District because you didn't follow your exact policy, but things are moving so fast and changing so quickly right now, we have to make judgment calls, is, is that major enough to bring the whole Board back together, or should the administration just carry that out in the best interest of the District and the plan? I'll talk to Nancy and say, hey, you know, Board policy says we should do XYZ, but I think we should do ZYX. What do you think, you okay with us doing that? Yeah, okay, we tell the whole Board we're gonna do ZYX, this is why. Board members can always request, two Board members, that's all it takes, is to call a special board meeting and then put a pause on that, but this is really to protect, does a couple of things. One, it protects the District from those kinds of liability claims and lawsuits and those kinds of things. This also provides another layer of protection against administrators, or for administrators. As I've discussed with many Board members several times, what the state has done is really isolated superintendents and put us out on the ledge with this plan by saying that the plan, it's the sole discretion of the superintendent to approve a plan. In some school districts, the superintendent is executing the plan, enrolling it out to the community, and the Board has no approval over it, because ISB did not require Boards to approve return-to-school plans.
I'm not sure, just my opinion, it was such a big decision that I wouldn't want...
Nor do I.
Exactly, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to take that on.
So tonight, the action item makes that Board action, which now makes it the law of the school, this plan of how we're going forward, and then this is another layer of protection for both the Board and for the administration. As we try to execute this plan that's happening in real time with things changing from the state and from health guidelines and everything else, you're providing a layer of protection both for the Board but for the administration. And our legal counsel strongly recommends that both pieces that we did tonight, they strongly recommend that the Board takes action on the plan, and they strongly recommend that the Board takes action on this resolution.
And this is, this is our attorney?
This is the Board's attorney, not Hank's attorney.
So this is our attorney recommending that we do this.
And Shelley is available if you would like for me to call her in any way, but I'm carrying along her recommendation.
It's just a question.
No, no, I just...
Good one.
Yeah, it's a great question, yeah. It's kind of a weird one, because not often does the Board give authorization to the administration to ignore their policies. So it is unusual.
So are there, is there any more discussion?
Let's call the question.
Can we call the question?
Any other thoughts?
Motion for the Board of Education to approve the COVID-19 reopening plan approval resolution. We had, I forget who...
It was Mike and Dan?
Yeah.
Correct, yeah. Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Dan Nicholas?
Aye.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Rick Pavanado?
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler?
Aye.
Sherrell Fuller?
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka?
Aye, motion carries, and finally, we need a motion for the Board of Education to approve the textbook Foundations of Interior Design for the 2020-2021 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Who?
I'm sorry, who and who?
Joanna.
I made the motion.
Mike and Joanna.
Thank you very much.
Can I just make a, because we didn't talk about this one?
Yes, please.
This is a textbook for CTE, Career and Technical Education. It is for a course that is a dual-credit course, and originally, we didn't think we were gonna have a textbook with it, but working with the college for the dual-credit part, this is the book that they recommend, and actually, we've come to like the book, so we're, that's why it's, it's up for recommendation tonight. I don't know, Rob, is there anything else to add to that? How'd I do?
Good.
All right, thank you.
Memo that came along, it was good explanation.
Okay, anything else? You wanna call the float?
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler?
Aye.
Sherrell Fuller?
Aye.
Dan Nicholas?
Aye.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Rick Pavanado?
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka?
Aye, motion carries. Finally, we'll have the last reception of visitors, this is an opportunity for audience members to address the Board on any topic pertaining to Community High School District 99. Come on up.
Come on up. Wow, you made it for the long haul.
Come on down.
Come on, it's only three minutes to provide, you know, all visitors an equal opportunity.
All visitors.
I did make it for the long haul again, Melissa Rausch, R-A-U-S-C-H, I have an incoming freshman at Downers Grove North High School. I just want to ensure that moving forward, that our teachers are supported fully and completely with this plan, and I do understand the reasons for your decision today, however, there are, again, only six days until teachers report, and with this movement to move forward, there are going to be things that come up. As an educator, I can already see some things that are gonna come up that are going to need to be discussed and negotiated, and I really urge you to please stand by those teachers and make the public aware that this is a fluid discussion, and it is not the burden of the teachers. They, if they have asks, they are asked because it is their right to ask, and so I really strongly encourage you to please keep that narrative going for those teachers. I also encourage you to please help those teachers explore remote learning in all of the facets that they have in a way that's not just technology, okay? What we heard from students, what we heard from parents, and what we've heard from teachers is that it's difficult and it's challenging, and I would hope that the teachers are looking to the Board, and I know as a parent, I am looking to the Board and the administration, to provide examples, training, pedagogical best practice, not just tech tools along the way. That is how our students are going to be successful, and if we only focus on the tech and we do not focus on all those other aspects, then we will fail our students, and our teachers will struggle, and it will be an issue. Finally, I would like to, on behalf of the public, of our community, apologize for the atrocious things that people said. It was offensive. None of you should ever have to hear those things from people when you are up here doing the best that you possibly can and have been put in the position by the state. So please, I am offering my apologies on behalf of the community, and I want to thank you for the work that you have done, and I am putting my trust in you and the administration and the teachers with the future of my student and the students in the District, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rausch.
Thank you.
Well, the cool part about sticking around and being the last person is you actually usually get a little dialogue from the superintendent, so we'll keep that tradition going, and I'll just comment that Ed and Janice and our team are working with teams of teachers to do exactly what you asked around pedagogy and professional development, examples of good lessons and, and those kinds of things, or, we have teams of our teachers working on that with our administration, because they're the best ones to lead it, you know, I haven't been in the classroom for a few years, so best to lead on our teachers to help us develop that professional learning for, so that's happening, and we will support our teachers just as you have asked.
We'll start that tomorrow morning at 7:40, when all our new teachers come for their first workshop.
Ed's gonna sleep in the parking lot. All right, that's...
Thank you very much, thank you.
I think that's all we have.
Anything else?
We moved that we adjourned.
We have a motion to adjourn, all those, we need a second?
Second.
Mike, seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for your service, I know it's been a lot of work.